We'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna start with a pledge of allegiance by, led us, oh my gosh, led by Commissioner Losi. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody out again. We'll go ahead and move to item number two, which is our public comment section. We welcome anyone to come up to the podium, but just as a reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Also, make sure to state your name and address for the record. And please direct your comments to the entire commission, and then we will not respond during your comments, but the time is now yours.
My name is Stacy Eddings. My address is twenty-six forty-five east, seventy-eight hundred south. In regard to the Deer Run Townhouse project, at the December thirteenth city council meeting, we provide a public comment in opposition to the proposed playground and dog park adjacent to our property in Mr. Cook's new concept plan. We provided the city council with a list of many reasons why we do not want playground and a dog park next to our property. During the dialogue of the meeting, council members, Albert and Petty also agreed that there should not be a dog park or a playground on that property and all amenities should be retained within the upper property. This also stated the property adjacent to ours should just be the detention basin and nothing more. In the revised plan being brought before you tonight, Mr. Cook has removed the playground, but has retained the dog park and enlarged it. Please consider our previous requests as to not allowing a dog park directly adjacent to our property and leaving that area just as an attention basin. Detention basin, sorry.
Hey Stacy, just real quick, sorry. We are actually gonna have a public hearing on that particular item. If the rest of your comments are directed for that particular item, if you wanna hold that until we open up the public hearing, that would be.
The next one, okay, the next one is for the Crosswind subdivision.
Yeah, we're gonna have a public hearing on that one as well. Yep. Okay, thank you very much, Stacy. All right, looks like we're good. Yeah, look for, I always get that confused.
You were, you were.
Paul, we're gonna have words later, you and I.
Yeah, we're talking.
All right, item number three, approval of consent agenda. Are there any items or concerns from my fellow commissioners that they'd like to bring up? This, again, this is a reminder, this is the meeting from the twelfth, not the twenty-sixth. Any items that we need to adjust?
I had two.
Go ahead.
On the consent agenda, it just needs to show that it's twenty-twenty-three, oh, one, twelve. Yep, so I just wanna make sure that that gets corrected. And then, under the comments where it was talking about what I was asking, I was inquiring about the city council retreat. I would like that just added in there, because it just says I was inquiring about something, but it doesn't say what it was, so. If that can get added, just for clarification purposes. And I believe there was one other item that Commissioner Boatwright had, where he was thanking Taylor or Commissioner Walton, not himself. So if we can get that corrected, those were the only items that I noticed.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything to add to what Commissioner Losi has mentioned.
And I, and she got the ones I had as well, so I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda of PC twenty-twenty-three, oh, one dash twelve minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Do, just for a point of clarity, do we need to add in that we approve with the adjustments? As amended, okay, will you just?
Yes, as amended.
Okay, great, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, okay. I, I do wanna excuse Gary, our commissioner Boatwright. He was not able to make it this evening due to a prior engagement, so we are sad that he's not here with us tonight. Item number four, we do want to officially welcome Chad Scola, Commissioner Scola, to the planning commission. It's really nice to have you on the diocese here, so we're gonna look forward to working with you, but I'll give you a couple minutes if you'd like to say something.
Yep, thanks for having me. I appreciate the opportunity, and yeah, I'm, I'm here to ensure that we do our best to preserve South Weaver as much as possible, so that's, that's my goal.
Awesome. Well, again, we're happy to have you, and we look forward to working with you. This will be a fun adventure for all of us. Thanks. You got it. Item number five, appointment of chair and vice chair. So every, every year, we need to appoint an official chair and vice chair. So what I'd like to do is to start this off, if there is anyone that wants to present an interest in being the chair for this year, I think, or, or vice chair, then I think now's a good time to do that, and then we can go ahead and open up motions to confirm that or, or debate either way. So I'm happy to go first and say that I would love to be the chair again. I've had a lot of fun over the past year, definitely have a lot to learn, because still make mistakes. But I do enjoy it, and it's been really fun to learn this part of the process, so if you guys will have me, I'd be happy to be the chair again this year. And then I would recommend Commissioner Losi to continue as vice chair as well. I think she's done a fantastic job, and she got a opportunity to stand in for me and did a good job.
One meeting, my limit.
So if you guys are okay with that, or everyone's okay with that, then I'll look for a motion to confirm that, and then we'll move forward.
I'll make a motion to confirm that we continue with you, Commissioner Davis, as the, as the chair and Commissioner Losi as the vice chair.
And I second that motion. Okay, do we do a roll call on this one? Okay, all right, so we'll just do an official roll call, starting with Commissioner Scola.
Hi.
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 And I'm an I as well, okay. I appreciate the confidence in you guys and, and patience, and bear with me as I continue to learn this role here.
And now we don't have to switch chairs.
Yeah. All right. Item number six, public hearing in action on preliminary plat, two lot commercial subdivision, conditional use, and architectural review for Crosswind subdivision parcels, thirteen zero-three-nine-zero-zero-eight-two and thirteen zero-three-nine-zero-zero-eight-three, approximately five and a half acres, located at approximately seventy-seven fifty south, twenty-seven hundred east by applicant Geneva Blanchard of John W. Hanson and Associates. I'd like to turn it over to staff just to kinda do a high-level overview, and then afterwards, if I could have Geneva say a few words, see if they're addressing any concerns, and then let us know, and then we'll open it up for comments after that. Is that okay?
We saw you walk by my office, and I said, that's Geneva.
He's just very intuitive, so.
I give them like flashcards. Okay, matter of the commission, I'm, this, this development is kind of exciting for that entrance to the city. And so there's some items to work through. As we go through these preliminary items tonight, I just wanna kind of remind you of the, the process for our development, our development process in the preliminary stage. So there's items in the preliminary stage, and a lot of those are listed inside the packet that need to be approved by the planning commission prior to them moving forward in the process to a final application. They don't have to all be approved tonight. We have, we have two meetings in that preliminary stage. Typically, if it needs to go further and continues other meetings, that's to be seen in the future, and that's, that's kind of at the discretion of the planning commission. But, but, so as we review the items tonight, if you have any concerns or questions or things that need to be fixed prior to approving them, then you don't have to feel pressured that you have to make a decision tonight. You can continue that item into the future to continue the full preliminary packet. So think of the full preliminary plan as just needs to be all wrapped up in a nice little bow before you can chuck it over to the city council to open and, and have them poke holes at it after that. That helps to kind of frame that conversation. So overall, this subdivision, when in our staff review, had not too many notations from us. As, as you've seen in the packet, some minor revisions on the, on the planning side and on, on the engineering side. And we can go into those further as we, we discuss the projects in, in more in depth. But this project is on the western or eastern portion of the city, along twenty-seven hundred, near the, I, I don't know, the highway eighty-nine interchange there. This is on the southern half of the, the subdivision is for both lots or both parcels on that whole acreage there. This development is gonna happen on lots two of that, that subdivision. Some of the site plan does extend into lot one, which, which is okay, as long as the owners of lot one have a, an agreement that they can cross and have a cross-utilization agreement, basically. So it's a little bit funky. I know every development feels, it seems that everything should be hunky-dory and easy, but they, everything comes differently for, for land, and so that's kind of the framework that we're looking at today. So we're looking at the preliminary plat for those two lots. As we review those, that preliminary plat, everything seems in order. There may need to be small revisions on the final plat as we solidify the property acquisition that needs to happen for the right-of-way preservation. Right now, we're not, we're not building onto that right-of-way, but we have to secure the future right-of-way expansion as, as that progress moves forward. There's no set timeline on when that road is gonna expand, but we just have to plan for that expansion as we do that. And so that, for the final, we feel comfortable with what the preliminary plat has. On the final, there might be a small border revision based on findings from our, our engineer. Other than that, everything on the plat looked, looked good for us. Other than, there is a utility easement on lot one that needs to be notated in, in that plat, and again, that can be something as a conditional, a condition to place on the approval of that plat tonight. Or when you see that the site plan, overall, the site plan looks great. The only concern that we have is that there, there isn't enough parking for the projected use. Right now, the projected use is a thirty thousand square foot building, a medical office building. The, the tenant is gonna occupy approximately half of that building, but as we plan the site plan, we need to plan for the, the highest use on that property and not just the use that's going in, so we need to have that plan on where the hundred fifty stalls will go. Again, they can utilize other land for parking. They just have to have that cross-access agreement and, and cross-use agreement. This is a conditional use because it's commercial property over one acre, and so we, we can look at any conditions that are outlined in our code and place, recommend conditions upon it with approval of the city council. We do have everything for an architectural review, and so we, we feel pretty confident that that, that can be reviewed tonight as well, and the improvement plans have been submitted as well. But right now, we do not have a landscape plan, so that will have to be submitted prior to the next planning commission before it can be recommended for any final approval. And, and so that's kind of where we're at on there. Did I miss anything, Brandon?
No.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's the, the overview for the project. Obviously, we'll, we'll get into more details as we go forward, but that's, that's it for me.
Great, thank you, Trevor. Would you mind stepping up to the podium and and adding any additional comments you'd like? I'm gonna have you say something now, and then sit down and then open it up for a public comment, and then we might ask you to step back up if we have additional questions, okay?
For the record, Geneva Blanchard, thirteen fifty-two west, ten fifty north, far west. Honestly, Trevor had a great report, so he hit home. Parking is the number one thing that stands out to me, which we are working with the developers on lot one. For them, just, they're almost done with their site plan, so we will utilize their parking, and we should be right, we should actually be over the hundred and fifty stalls. So I think that's my main issue. There are some easements that need to be added to the subdivision plat, but as far as the site plan, we're doing our best with what you guys have thrown at us. So we've been able to keep the square footage of the building, which is great for the user, and parking is our biggest issue right now. But landscape plan, open space, detention, things like that, we should be able to work around. So do you have any questions for me?
I think we'll hold our questions for you until after a public comment, but thank you for the additional context. All right. I'll look for a motion to officially open up the public, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing on agenda item number six. Do I need to read the whole thing again, because it's already been read once? Okay. Just ask it.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, if there are any comments on that particular agenda item, feel free to come to the podium.
My name is Stacy Eddings, twenty-six forty-five east, seventy-eight hundred south. So looking at the layout of the Crosswoods subdivision project, we have a couple of concerns. First, we are connected with how much li, or we are concerned about how much lighting this project will have. We already deal with the unreasonable amount of light pollution at night from the maverick and the car wash. We don't want to be staring at another huge light, another huge lighted sign or a field of parking lot, or a field of parking lot lights. Second, we are concerned with the interest in the exit of the project being constructed directly across from seventy-eight hundred south. We are not against the location per se, but more so of the proposed future roundabout in this location. We do not like the idea of a huge roundabout being built in front of our house, and we feel a two-way stock would work fine. There are many things to take into consideration before you plan or on constructing a roundabout there. For example, impeding our access to our driveway, location of the interest, entrance slash exit for property to the north, it'd be too close to the roundabout. School bus pickup, drop-off location, et cetera, suggests taking an in-depth look at all the situations before you prove an entrance-exit, hoping it is connected to something that may not come to fruition.
Paul Stern, South Weaver City. This is just a off-the-cuff, but I'm very impressed with the design and completeness of the project as it stands right now. The only suggestion I would have is to find out if there's any way to lower the overhaul height or profile of the building. Because it appears there's, I don't, I can't, there's no detail if it's a two-story or not, but if it's not a two-story, you've got a lot of airspace above. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
My name is Dud Bitten. I live at twenty-six thirty-five east, seventy-eight hundred south, next to the Eddings. I also echo probably the light pollution that possibly could be through this development. I mean, hopefully encouraged, haven't looked at all the sheets, but hopefully the, through the planning commission and the planners, that a photo metric type of survey and also analysis will be done to make sure that the lighting does not crossover into different sections of the residential living area. As, as far as the roundabout, I'm, I have really no objections to that, or even this development, other than on the roundabouts. It'd be, hopefully, everything detailed, and I haven't seen anything on this, but it will be a continuation to improve seventy-eight hundred south for its commuter traffic that is currently, right now, in my opinion, subgrade and not very accessible for the demand and pressure that it has right now. There's certain ash-toe type of road base and requirements that are needed. So I would hope that by development, either on this parcel lots subdivision, the two lots, or the one adjacent to the west, I guess, would be somewhere there in the development agreement, there would be something to improve seventy-eight hundred south for this. And so that's all my comments, but I'm in favor of this, with these comments, I'd stand.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, after that, yeah, thank you. All right, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, now, if you don't mind stepping in so we can ask questions, and if you're okay with just kinda hanging out for a minute while we kinda
Yeah, absolutely.
Ask questions, that'd be great.
Do you want me to address their questions, or you wanna start with you guys?
Sure, yeah, go ahead and start with that.
Um, regarding the height, I'm trying to think of each person that said stuff, height, it is a two-story building, and it has beautiful, I think we're at ten-foot ceiling. So it's beautiful, and I don't think your city has a height restriction on commercial.
It's thirty-five feet.
Oh, okay, well, I know we're under that, so. As far as the roundabout, we would love for it to go away too, so, but that's a city thing, so we're just going by what the city wanted, so we've adjusted accordingly. And then lighting will go toward your standards, and the owner, who is actually here, is very conscious of the lighting and the output, and her logos will be backlit, not shining, everything will be contained within your site. So, and that approval will come through with final with the lighting. No, but across the street, I'm guessing?
Right there, this one. So that's not true, so I'm not sure how that would work, but you're not my heritage, and you saw, given the parking, you know.
So we'll all shine down and meet whatever city ordinance is that, that are here.
Yeah, we, we have dark sky compliance for those, and so we'll, we'll have the lighting plan and look at where that light casts off. It's not allowed to, you can't see the light source from anywhere off of the property, right, and all of it has to be cast down onto the property and can't shine out of the property line. They, they, they've had the lighting reviewed too, so it, you will get some, some overhang light, and I, I mean, as you look out, you will see that, but that's just the nature of that area and what the general plan has. Yeah.
I was just gonna ask on that one, just because we are discussing lighting, like we had with the general RV presentation, do we have that, the lighting?
We don't have that as of right now, but.
But we will get it, so we'll be able to see exactly the lumens and where it's gonna be at in the brightness.
That's required before that final step.
And along with the placement of the, I mean, obviously, the parking from what's on this presentation is gonna be changing.
Yep.
And, you know, with that cross-hatch agreement with lot one, is there gonna be a way to see exactly with those, the increased number of stalls and the parking, just where it's at in the layout?
They'll be required to show the full site plan of where those parking stalls will be, right, so they'll, they'll have to show that along with the plan, yeah.
To give a little backstory, because I've met with Kim and Trevor and Brandon a couple times. To make it easier for you guys, so that it wasn't all this information coming at one meeting, I asked them if we could break it up so that you got to see it, explore it, ask questions, and then we'll move on to final for these exact reasons, because it's a lot coming to you. Subdivision site plan, big building, commercial, road widening, roundabouts, all that. So it was just an ease of being able to get the information in front of you. You review it, ask questions, and then we'll be back.
And I think one thing that will be helpful is on the elevations, is, because there's obviously gonna be lighting on the building, and I know you said backlighting, obviously, behind like the signage and the business logos, but there's gonna be light, how are they gonna be placed? But there's going to be light, how are they going to be placed, where they potentially look like?
Yep, there'll be a whole exhibit just to lighting, same with the landscape plan. We just wanted to get something in front of you so we could get ideas that we were headed in the right direction and working with the road widening roundabout situation, so yeah.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, did you have any other questions?
Um, I did have, one of it was why fencing was not being required. Um, because I know right now we do have fencing along that eastern boundary, I believe it's chain link. Um, and I thought there was something in the mother that said that fencing wasn't going to be required. Um, just had a question about that. I think it's definitely needed. I know we've got fencing around the, the park and ride, you know, with it being a commercial, I don't know why that wouldn't be.
So there's an existing chain link fence along the highway.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but in our code, we only require a masonry fence along I eighty-four and not on the eighty-nine corridor. And so there's an existing chain link fence for that.
Is that thing in place? Okay, so it's not like fencing's being taken out, so, okay.
And that fence is actually UDOTs, I don't believe it's ours, so we won't touch that.
Okay, which is fine. And I don't think, I mean, there's not a residential neighborhood that is buffering it, so masonry fences or anything like that, I don't think is necessary. That was kind of all I had, I believe. Let me double check. Yep, we're good.
Oh my God. Commissioner McFadden?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
You're a, you're taking the helm of Commissioner Waldman. I'm sorry, I will improve, I promise.
Hey, I, I appreciate it, no worries. Um, so I wanted to know if you've had any thoughts or discussions on how to make parking work? If, if, if those directions have already been kind of?
Yes, so to give you a little insight, the parcel next door will be, or they'll, they'll come in and see you, but uh, kind of a quick lube station. So they're doing, and with the easements on, on lot one, they're doing a very small building with the rest of it being a paved surface. So they actually have the most room for parking and I met just last week with them and they are game for all of it. So we'll add a little bit more parking on their side. Um, since that plan that you guys have, we've adjusted the building a little bit more, added about twenty-three new stalls just on her site. So we're really close to that number and with their site, I think we should be good.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay. Um, that was really the only thing that, reservation I had. I, I do uh, like the look of the building. Um, I, I, I think that, you know, you, you have really, um, you know, it, it's got a good combination of materials. Um, you know, it's, it's not in your face, it's really unassuming.
Right.
You know, just a nice, uh, very simple and, uh, yeah, just, just nice clean lines. Um, so in answer to your question, I, I, I think that you're going in the right direction.
Okay, good. She liked that.
Good, Commissioner McFadden?
Nope.
Sorry, throw that sass in there a little bit. All right, Commissioner Score.
Um, I, I had a couple, I, and maybe these have been addressed since I'm just kind of coming into this now, but that, it says that we're holding off on, on the widening of the road and we're holding off on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I can answer that, so. Um, the, the city and, and maybe not everybody has the background, but the, the city um, is updating their transportation master plan. Uh, started that process about um, a year ago. As part of that, there's always been kind of concern about this, this stretch of twenty-seven hundred east and all the undeveloped ground and what it might be someday. And so as part of that study, they studied this section of twenty-seven hundred east to uh, try to identify, how should we plan for this? Uh, the, the study came back, uh, the consultant that was hired is um, WCG, that's the company. And the result of that study came back suggesting that uh, that that road, that section needs to be a five-lane road, meaning two lanes in both directions and then a turn lane in the center. Um, that's a, that's a, that's a very typical cross-section that you will see, you know, in commercial areas. Um, the need for that isn't immediate, but since they're developing now, we're, we're trying to make sure that we preserve the right of way or the property ground for that to expand at some point in time in the future.
All right, so it's mostly just being held off because of us then, on, on the city side then, okay?
Correct, yeah, and, and the, the, the widening would likely be, you know, one project where they do the whole thing, not just a, a piece in front of their plan.
Okay.
So there's not a need right now, but we do want to make sure that, that they don't build a building in a location that, that, that takes away that option for us in the future.
Okay, and to go along a little bit with that, so when we, we did the study, this is why there's not a traffic study with this one, is that we completed the traffic study with that uh, right-of-way uh, study that we did. And so, um, they kind of lucked out on that, because people are like, oh, we have all the data. And when we did that traffic study, we had accounted for actually a medical office building and a fast food building. And so the, that's where we got um, a lot of the, the use in shot.
And the sidewalk will just be that, we'll give the city what we would have put in sidewalk and they'll hold it and put it in when you guys do the investment, so it's not being ripped out and turned over again, yeah, so.
Um, and then I had a, um, the same lighting concern, um, and then just after the general RV and I mean, the main reason for lighting there was that, you know, security reasons. So I was just, as I was thinking through, like, is there, like, is there any need for lighting past, you know, a certain time in the evening?
Yes, exactly, you said it, security, and I believe the city requires that we, especially for parking, yeah.
There, there's a, yeah.
I'm not sure if we require.
A lit parking lot?
But it, but it's private property and, you know, there, they have the right to, you know, whatever security measures they establish, that we go past what we require in the code.
Okay.
I, 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 but I can't say that I know specifically if there's anything in the code that requires they force security.
Okay, yeah, I mean, overall, I, I, I mean, if I had to choose what kind of a building to put in that, it would be something similar, it's just based on, you know, all the other ones that have been going up that, I mean, they're beautiful buildings and it's something as close to, I would say banker hours is, you can do so minimal traffic and not all night long and um, so other than that, I, I really like it. Those are just a few questions that I had, so. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I had one other thing, and just in terms of hours of operation, given the targeted businesses that are bringing in, that we're looking at.
About eight to six.
Standard business hours, weekends?
Uh, not really.
Okay.
Per practice, I don't know that based on who will occupy the other half.
Okay.
Um, but usually no.
And I know that's kind of hard when you don't know who's going to occupy the other half of the building to stay, but for the most part, it's going to be professional space.
It will a hundred percent be professional space, yeah.
Okay.
And more than likely medical.
And same thing for the, I know we don't have lot one in front of us right now, but if it is going to be kind of like a quick loop station, it's not a Sunday operation?
That I can't answer, I don't know.
You don't know?
That one will be a separate um, site plan application with conditional use, because the acreage of the property.
Cause that one's still a conditional use as well.
Yeah, because the property is over an acre.
Okay.
And so we require an additional.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yeah, you guys uh, had all my questions answered, so it's good.
Yeah, number one's bigger.
Um, is there any other discussion that you guys feel is needed? I say you guys, you, everyone.
You people?
You, you, um, only, I, on the um, landscaping?
Mm-hmm.
Or I don't know if it's the time to discuss that.
Landscaping will be part of the final.
I just had my other questions regarding that, so.
It's, it needs to be completed prior to any recommendations for a final approval.
Right.
Yeah.
So they'll come, yeah.
It.
Gary had that question.
We're trying to change our vernacular instead of having a preliminary meeting to a final meeting. If they, preliminary discussion, once the preliminary is complete, then you can recommend a final action by the city council. Does that make sense?
Love it.
So you'll have two, two meetings at least for the, for the preliminary package and then you can recommend a final action.
Cause this is pretty much just splitting the land and making it so that they've got the two separate lots that they can then move forward with.
Correct.
According to our development process.
And, and the site plan, right?
And the site.
That, and the site plan, landscape plan, um, improvement plans are all under the jurisdiction of the planning commission, whereas the final plat is the jurisdiction of the city council and the conditional use, the jurisdiction of the city council on a commercial use.
So help me on this one, Trevor, what are we, are we approving anything for council tonight? Or are we just approving that everything is good except for we, we rec, we recognize that we still need the few things that we've already called out?
So uh, we, I feel like the site plan is not ready for approval tonight because we need to see, see that additional parking.
Right.
But we wanted you to see the, the basic site plan currently, so if you had any other comments towards the site plan, they can address those. Um, and then the, the architectural review, we feel that you, if you feel comfortable, you can complete that tonight. The preliminary plat, we feel comfortable that you can complete that tonight with the condition to add the easements on the final plat. Um, there, there wasn't any other plat, I, that was the only one. Um, and then uh, improvement plans, we, are, those will need to come back with the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so improvement plans will be back to that plan.
Can we do a quick review of the architectural?
Do that, yeah.
Um, I, I feel like we, we saw that some of the elevations, I, I didn't see a lot of detail on the finishes, materials.
I think that there's a material.
There was one that was all the interior, like there was a lot of the interior, I couldn't find the exterior in the packet.
And I'm happy to come back with that too, and I can do a nice little, oh yeah, breakdown of what it is when we combine with one word.
Little annotation, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think that it's called out in that incident, that can be as well.
The materials are not called out.
I'm happy to submit those with a finished document.
So that's one where we would just continue till next, till March, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So when you, when you make a motion that you just motion to approve the items from the, actually right, whatever your motion to approve. Um, and then any of the other items will just continue to the next meeting. Um, do we need to make that part of the motion to continue the other items or just because of? That they not, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Okay, so approve the sections and then continue the rest?
Well, just approve the sections and then the rest will just automatically.
Automatically continue, okay, got it. All right, so from what I'm seeing, the um, the architectural review needs to continue.
The plat, because we need to have the easement.
The plat for the easements.
Isn't it the subdivision?
So is the only thing that's ready for approval is the site plan?
Like the location, the actual placement of the building.
Limited plat.
Yeah, just the preliminary plat.
Thank you, yeah.
Same thing that's ready.
Okay, is it, is the site plan the one that holds, oh, that's the parking, okay.
Yeah.
The preliminary plat is just the setting the two lots and all the other items on there are the improvement plans, site plan, um, and the architectural.
And it looks like on, we've got sufficient easements, all the easements are being followed according to the code and zoning, like there's nothing that's outside of the easement.
Correct, it's just that one easement that needs to be added and that can be a condition.
And that was the petroleum, the three, four line? Is it four line?
I don't know how many lines there are.
Three, okay.
Two companies, three lines.
Thank you. And there's not going to be any problems getting those easements recorded on there?
No.
And it doesn't impact the, and again, I know we don't have lot one in front of it, but I just want to make sure that it's sufficient.
Those, those easements are where they are, they're just going to stay in place.
Perfect. And we'll see more detail, obviously, when that comes.
Yeah, yeah, that, that will matter when they do their site plan to, to make sure that they're not placing a building on top of it, right?
Yeah.
Pinging upon that.
All right, so then it looks like what we're looking to approve, or, and you guys can correct me, but a motion to approve the preliminary plat, the conditional use permit and the improvement plans, everything else gets continued. Are we in agreement there?
Yeah, yep.
All right, then I'll look for a motion to make that, so.
Do it, Jeremy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Um.
When it's appropriate, I'll second it. All right, go ahead.
Like to make a motion to approve the um, preliminary plat uh, improvements and
recommend a conditional.
Sorry, and I'd like to recommend a conditional use permit. For the preliminary plat.
For, you have to say the development.
Oh, sorry. Lot two, commercial subdivision, um, crosswind subdivision, parcels thirteen dash zero thirty-nine dash zero eight-two and thirteen dash zero three-nine dash zero zero eight-three. Um, and continue the rest.
Are we clear on that? Everyone agree?
Based, based on the commission discussion and staff discussion?
I'm going to repeat it just so that
Yep.
We make sure we have it right. Um, Commissioner McFadden moved to recommend approval of the preliminary plan, two lot, commercial subdivision, conditional use and improvement plans and to continue the architectural review for crosswind subdivision parcels, et cetera, et cetera.
I think the preliminary plat, not.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
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 And I'm a I as well, okay. Um, we're going to make a slight adjustment to the agenda this evening and we're going to let um, our amazing Jamie uh, give us some training, so we'll go ahead and move you up and then we'll continue from there.
I'll work something.
Yeah.
Which one are we doing first thing?
Let's start with the ethics and open in public meetings. And then we'll do powers and duties after that. So Trevor showed me this week that there has been a lot of, a lot in the news about new AI technology and that within not too long, I'll be out of the job because it's pretty good at what it does. So we were playing with it as we were talking about this training and we, we logged on and I asked it, prepare powers and duties training for a planning commission in South Weaver, Utah. And the slides that put together weren't too bad. Um, they had enough errors, thankfully, that you still get me.
You have some job security.
Is this the, the chat GPT?
Chat GPT. So then we asked it, well, write a poem about the powers and duties of a planning commission in the state of Utah, and what it came up with was not too bad. And then I said, change it for South Weaver, Utah and make it funny. And I thought I'd read you a few verses of the chat GPT um, poem on the powers and duties of the South Weaver planning commission. In South Weaver City, Utah, there's a crew with powers and duties that are brand new. They plan for the future and don't you forget, making decisions that won't cause regret. They listen to the community with their ears wide open and take their opinions without fail or token, but sometimes the decisions they make can be so silly, you can hear people's belly ache. Like, let's paint the town green and not just the grass, or let's put a giant statue of a moose in the square at last. But in the end, they always know how to balance growth and make the town glow. Anyway, that was its kind of Dr. Susie rendition of your powers and duties with a few words filled in. Um. A topic that today has skis and a
Steve's out for South Weaver.
So I thought it was pretty clever and good and I think chat GPT is still learning humor because it thinks if you put the word silly in it periodically, that it passes, it's funny. We're going to spend the next little while doing your um, open in public meetings act training, Robert's rules training and ethics, ethics training, and then we'll dip into powers and duties. This works best if you ask a lot of questions and interrupt me, that's better than if I talk the whole time, so please feel free to jump in as we work through the slides. As we work through the slides. Is there a clicker or should I just ask you, Kim, to advance it? I'll just have Kim advance it.
Maybe you get a clicker.
By the way, thank you for being here.
I'm happy to be here, yeah.
We don't, we don't get the honor of your presence too often, so.
I think it's a good thing to say that we haven't had to see Jamie too often.
That's true.
That means we're not doing anything. Out of line with our our responsibilities.
Well, I think while I wait on Trevor, I'll just have Kim advance it. So the, we'll, we'll work through the Open and Public Meetings Act. Stuff pretty quickly unless you have questions, but the basic premise of the Open and Public Meetings Act is that. Things that are within the purview and are your business, you have to deliberate and conduct your business openly. All meetings are open unless lawfully closed and the act defines what a meeting is. It's anytime you have a quorum of your body present and you are together to do the business of the planning commission. And a quorum is a simple majority. So in your case, it's anytime there's three of you. So if you bump into each other at Maverick and there are three of you present, but all you're doing is buying soda and pumping gas, you're okay. But if you meet in the Maverick parking lot and you're looking at the development across the street and what it might look like. Then that probably would be a meeting and it's something you'd have to notice. Before you could hold it and could discuss in that way, or you could send one of you away. And just have the other two there because then you'd be less than a quorum.
There are certain distances that we have to be away from each other so as not to convey.
I don't know that I want the statute to have that level of granularity, so. Uh a public meeting requires notice, it requires an agenda. You have to list the topics that you're going to decide or. Make recommendations on in the agenda. If it's not there, you can't act on it. And then you have to publish an annual notice of your scheduled meeting.
I said the twenty-four hours. I feel like we we set ours out like a week. Is that what we do?
And we can't change it within that twenty-four hour period.
But from time to time, you'll circulate an agenda and realize you have to change something and you can make those changes up until that twenty-four hour.
Got it.
Window. Uh there are provisions in the Open and Public Meetings Act for emergency meetings. I can't think of a situation where a planning commission would have to hold an emergency meeting, but I know. I I want to say South Weaver held an emergency meeting about a year ago to do a repair on, was it the roof? That had a leak and we had to contract for some, we had to make a budget amendment to. That was city council, not planning commission. Yeah, so. Emergency meetings don't happen that often, but they are allowed in certain circumstances. It doesn't define what the emergency circumstances are, so you're left to. Apply your judgment and document what that reason is.
Wait, we go back to.
Sure.
What is considered orderly conduct is seriously compromised. How do you, how do you define that?
The the easy line there is if there's any threatening behavior, then you can remove that person. But the, where it gets a little cloudy is if somebody's just disrupting a meeting. So you can, on a really heavy agenda or on a public hearing that brings a lot of people, you can limit comment to a certain period of time. And if somebody refuses to abide by that, or they speak out in a way that interrupts the meeting and keeps you from doing your business, you could have that person removed.
What would be the appropriate way to have somebody removed?
I would have, if they don't leave voluntarily, I would have the sheriff's office do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I would do that. I, you'd usually ask somebody nicely and then if they don't, you would say, you know, if you don't remove yourself or stop disrupting the meeting, we'll. We'll have to call somebody and have you forcibly removed.
Is it appropriate kind of to use the point of order?
For sure.
Just to control.
Yep, for sure. At the end of the day, you're volunteers, you have limited time. Uh you want to give things the time and the attention that they deserve, but you can't spend an indefinite amount of time on some topics. You are able to hold electronic meetings that's allowed under city code. Uh you have to have public notice and you have to have an anchor location. We saw a little deviation from that during COVID. And so there is a provision in the law where if you have a really compelling circumstance, you can. Not have an anchor location and hold those meetings, but it's really a public health emergency and unless we have something like. COVID that happens again and knock on wood, we don't, uh that circumstance wouldn't exist. So you just have to have. Whoever's chairing the meeting present at that anchor location, allow the public to attend at that anchor location and then everybody else could join. Electronically electronically can be pretty broad. It could be by telephone, it could be by Zoom meeting.
Have a question about that, just because there was actually a public comment that was made about a person that wasn't able to attend in person. Um and they were wanting to have the electronic chat on YouTube. Um to be read in and permitted. And I don't know, can we do that? Is that, is there even a functional way? To go about including somebody who can only join electronically. I know during COVID, we had people that had to register in advance. And you know, we let them in and then they were able to, you know, give their feedback and their, their comments.
I think the best practice on that is to decide ahead of time what type of public engagement you would allow. Uh I think YouTube chats sometimes can be really hard to follow, especially if you have a lot of people commenting and so making that a record of your meeting can be difficult. I would announce ahead of time, these are the ways that we would accept public comment. If it's a Zoom meeting and you have people joining by Zoom, Zoom chat's easier to manage. You can keep a record of it. And it's a little easier to incorporate into the minutes. And so lots of public bodies in the state of Utah will use Zoom and Zoom comments and allow. Uh that or allow those comments to be made, but you can decide the. The electronic means, I would just decide it ahead of time and have a policy on it.
So for best practices using, let's just say, Zoom comments. Would we have Kim call out the questions and then we would?
Kim could or the chair could, yeah, however you'd like to do it.
Where they can email in. We don't let them join via Zoom. We haven't. COVID was over with, but they can send. You're the only reason we do the Zoom is for commissioners that need to be present in the meeting that we've done to this point.
Got it, okay. So maybe something to discuss.
Sure.
And do we put on there that any public comment that is emailed in prior to the meeting that it has to be submitted by a certain time? Because I know we've had people submit comments after the meeting has taken place or it's come in, but then they wanted it added into the minute. Is that allowed or is it?
I would not recommend allowing that. I I think once you close the meeting, you close. I mean, you're part of what you're doing as a planning commission is when you meet, you're establishing a record. And at least for my part of it, and we'll get into this in powers and duties, I want you to establish a record that I can defend. If the city's decision is challenged. And so you only want comments. That are provided to you in a a setting where you can consider them. And if they're provided after the meeting and you make your decision in the meeting, that really isn't part of the record and I think it undermines the work that you're trying to do.
Thank you for clarifying that because it's gotten a little confusing and I haven't really known.
That's a great question.
Kind of the procedure we've done at this point, if it's not submitted by the time of the meeting. Um that night, then it's put in as a general comment on the next uh meetings. Minute.
So it still gets captured, it's just not put into the record.
It won't be put in the record of the, the meeting they're referencing that had already passed. But it's, it's similar to if they came into the next city council meetings that I want to talk about what happened at planning mission last week.
I bet after this discussion, Kim will tweak those agendas and we'll just put a little thing in saying. Any emailed comments received before the meeting will be considered part of the record and then anything. You know, after that start time, then we just can't consider them. You have to keep written minutes of a meeting. They have to be, the draft written minutes have to be available within. A few days of the meeting. The minutes have to include these details. It's three business days that they have to be. Available and and made public. You then will ratify the minutes at a later point in time and accept them, the draft when they're published. And then a recording of the meeting has to be kept of all meetings except for their. Safety and security conversations. There are certain procurement conversations and there are. Uh personnel decisions where you cannot record that closed session conversation. I don't know that any of those, except maybe the safety and security would apply to a planning commission discussion. Um I suppose if you were sanctioning a member of the planning commissioner doing something like that, then maybe part of that conversation, but. Um we're not going to experience that here, so. You can only close the meeting if you have a two-thirds vote. You have to state the subject matter for which you're closing the meeting and then here's the list of. Um the items that most often come up in a city context. And. For sure, yeah. Absolutely, yeah, this, feel free to share this with the commissioners and make it part of your minutes. We touched a little bit on emergency meeting. They are allowed in certain circumstances. I can't think that this would apply much to the work of a planning commission, but if it does, it's available.
Just real quick on that one, um. If if uh if there's a need for this emergency meeting. Can it only happen if we agree to attend? Like, how does that work? Like, what?
You would have to have a course, so it can only, and that's a great question. So here are the rules and we'll get into this a little bit when we do the Robert. Robert's rules stuff, but you can't use the. You can't selectively schedule meetings to try to force a majority vote with less than a quorum of the planning commission. So in the circumstance you described, you'd have to have a quorum to meet, so you'd have to have at least three people. But then you couldn't take action on anything unless you had a unanimous vote by those three individuals. It wouldn't change the requirement of a quorum approval for the planning commission to act on something.
So the two-thirds is counted for the full.
The two-thirds to go into closed session would be of who's present in the meeting. So two of the three, you could go into a closed session. But you have a requirement that you can't take action on an item unless you have a majority vote of the full membership of the planning commission. So even though you can meet with three, you can't take action unless all three were to vote unanimously.
Got it.
To act on something. Does that make sense? That's kind of a tricky point of order. Chance meeting or social gathering, so the act doesn't apply to those kinds of meetings, but you can't conduct city business when you do that. So. If you were to, you know.
I mean, anything we get together at South Weaver days and we talk, then nobody can construe us as having.
You may speak.
Meeting happen.
Yeah, just don't make any decisions or talk about the business. And there's a criminal penalty with these things and so that's a. A healthy reminder of why. A little note on electronic messaging, while you're holding meetings. Uh you don't want to be communicating with each other electronically. Uh if you do, those are public records, uh they can be discovered. They'd have to be provided. If we got a grandma request, the public could see them. And if you do a quick Google search or probably even a chat GPT search, you can be provided some examples in Utah in the last year or two. Public bodies that have gotten into real hot water because of this. Any other questions on open and public meetings before we move on? Okay, we'll move on to rules of order. This stuff is. There's a lot and so I'll move through it pretty quickly and stop me if you want. The the basic parliamentary rules apply to your meeting. But I would read the rules with a lowercase r, that these are guidance. If you depart from them, you're not violating Utah law. They're really there to keep order in meetings. Um not to be overly restrictive. So the basic rule in Robert's rules is your meeting's governed by an agenda and that's the guide for the meeting. There of course is the Open and Public Meetings Act requirement that if it's not on your agenda, you can't act on it. But it doesn't mean you have to take an agenda in order. It doesn't mean you can't. Um jump around a little bit or come back to things. It's a guide for your meeting. It gives notice of the things that you'll talk about. Anything that requires a decision must be on the agenda and should be brought by. Uh motion when you make a decision. So anytime you're taking action, it's, I move that and then you'll state what that action is. Uh the general rule is one question at a time, one speaker at a time. The chairperson can use general consent with motions and general consent is the fancy word for. You don't have to go and say Commissioner Scola, Commissioner McFadden, Commissioner Losi, Commissioner Davis and call for a vote. You can just say all in favor. Give a yay or nay and then um all opposed. And then do it that way. So most of your routine motions that relate to. Um opening and closing public hearings, voting on items that don't require a roll call vote, you can handle in that way and it's a little bit quicker. When you are taking action on uh more formal things, you will be required to do some things with roll call. And Trevor and Kim are aware of what most of those things are and can help guide you through that. During those meetings. There are only three basic motions that you'll see. Robert's rules gets really in depth and a little bit fancier, but most of what you'll see is an initial motion, a motion to amend and a substitute motion. And you really don't see more than three different motions on the floor at a time. How the, we'll, we'll run through an example in a minute of how these things usually come, but. You can continue to debate an item as long as any member of the body wishes to discuss it. Uh and then the chairperson is the one who decides when it's time to take action. And so if. Jeremy were to say, as chair, I think our discussion has kind of run full circle on this. I'd like to call for a vote. He then could call for a vote and and you would have that vote and then things would be decided at that point. Uh three yes votes again is what's required for your, your body because you have five members. A motion to reconsider an item requires a majority vote to pass. Um you'll very rarely see this, but you can have that happen. If you can act on something, you might get new information after the meeting. And if you want to reconsider, then a majority of you have to vote to reopen that item. And then you would vote again. Uh and then again, you have bylaws, you have to have a code of conduct, you have things within city code that would also apply. To your parliamentary rules. Okay, on motions, you have your main motion. And then you can have what are called subsidiary motions. So somebody would make a motion, I move that and then they'd state what it is. And you'd usually get a second and then somebody could make a secondary motion on that that would be, well, I like that, but I move to amend it in this way. Um or I move, or I make a substitute motion and then you can vote on that or consider that. Julie has a question.
I do, and it's only because that is where it's always gotten really, when we've had a main motion that's being created. And as it's going, if somebody wants to amend it, I feel like there's always that confusion in terms of. How does the first motion have to be addressed before the substitution or the secondary motion then gets addressed? We've always stumbled over that.
Yeah, so it can get a little tricky. Here's the general rule on it. And at the end of the day, it will fall on the chair of the meeting to. Keep order on how those things ought to be considered. When you're in a congressional setting or a legislative setting where you have lots and lots and lots of people, they're much more formal on these rules. Where you have five individuals, you can be a little bit less formal on them and use them as a guide. But basically how it would work is if somebody wishes to amend an emotion. They can ask that it be a friendly amendment. And I don't know that you need to be that formal in the language, but you could say have a friendly amendment and then you'd state what it is. And the person who made the original motion would say, you know, yes or no, I accept or I decline that motion. If the person who made the motion and the person who seconded the initial motion, um both say. I don't view that as a friendly amendment. We might use different language, but they, they could say, I don't like that. Uh I'd like to have a vote on the initial motion. Then the chair could allow for discussion, call for a vote on the initial motion. If it passes, it passes. If it fails, then you could have somebody make a substitute motion or consider something different.
So the, so the second, the amendment doesn't have to occur before the second happens?
No, it could happen after the second.
As soon as the second and then the, then the two, those two individuals.
That's correct. Yeah, the person that made the initial motion would have to accept or. Request that it go to a vote and then it would be up to the chair at the end of the day. But if you do have a motion and a second. And the amendment isn't accepted by the person who made the initial motion, then at some point it ought to come to a vote. And it would be up to you to decide how much discussion will you allow uh before that occurs.
Which I think is kind of how we've pretty much operated it because if somebody's making a motion and there's something that we're adding in, like. That kind of discussion that's still taking place during the motion is acceptable.
Correct, right.
Yeah, I think where where we can do better, I think is if we want to amend it. What we, what we've done in the past is have the original person kind of backtrack and change theirs where I think we can just let them continue. And then we can insert an amendment after.
Yeah, that is correct.
And I think that brings some of the confusion.
There are motions to table, motions to continue, motions to postpone. A quick note on what those means. What those mean, usually a motion to table is you're done considering an item and it's dead. Planning commissions don't always have that latitude. If you're a city council and you're considering a legislative decision, they can decide what they want to take up and what they don't want to take up. And so they can move to table something and it would just be done, it wouldn't come back for. It wouldn't come back in the same form for the council to consider. You won't see that very often, what you may see from time to time is a motion to continue or a motion to postpone. And that simply means that you want to consider an item at a later point in time. A footnote on that, you have an obligation to hear from the public and to hold public hearings on certain items. And if you move to continue a public hearing, you have to state when it will be continued to. So the public knows when they can come back and be heard again on that item. If you don't state a date, then it resets the clock for Kim and Trevor to send out the notices. And that can be pricey sometimes on land use decisions because you have to notify all the adjacent landowners and do the mailings and everything else. So just be sure if you're moving to continue or to postpone or to keep open a public hearing, you'll state a date. If you're just moving to continue a decision on something and you want the flexibility to do it at a later meeting. You can just state, I moved to continue this item to a later point in time and then. You don't need, then you have the flexibility of, do you do it at your next meeting or the one after that?
I would say is it typical that it has to be continued to the very next meeting?
No, it doesn't, and sometimes you're continuing something, like let's take the parking discussion that you just had a few minutes ago. Uh, if it's a complicated parking or site circulation issue or traffic issue and you need to wait for a study before you can consider it, make a decision. You can move to continue it until such time as you receive that study. And then can can tee it up for a decision, and that's entirely appropriate and when whenever it's done and whenever it's ready, then you can take it up. Um, and consider that decision. Okay, the six steps for a motion, so really quickly, you'll have a motion, you have a second. The chair, the best practice is to restate the motion that was just made. Uh, and then you would allow for debate or discussion. On the motion, once the chair believes that that debate and discussion has been full and everybody's had an opportunity to be heard. Then the chair will call for a vote, uh, the vote will be either a roll call or just a consent vote. And then the chair will state for the record uh what the vote was. I would say a best practice on votes that are not a roll call vote would be to say all in favor, allow for a response and then to say any opposed. Allow for a response and then you can simply note the votes unanimous or the motion carries and then. Uh, what that vote is. Uh, roll call votes required on an ordinance, a resolution or any action that would create a liability against the city. And typically that's a contractual action, the thing you'll see most often would be a development agreement. And I would recommend a roll call vote on that, even though what you're doing is making a recommendation and not uh passing the final ordinance. Uh, I see councils get cute with yay, nay, I. All different versions of of how you say that, you don't have to use those words, you can just say yes or no. Or you can say yay or nay or I or nay, uh, however you'd like, but I think yes or no is simplest. And it's easy enough in English to know the difference between the two. Okay, a few points of things you can during a meeting. Um, ask for a point of order, a point of information, a point of inquiry or a point of personal privilege. And this would just be you as a a member of the body. Um, point of order would be, something doesn't seem right, can you help me understand how we ought to handle this? A point of information, point of inquiry would be asking for more information about how to make your decision or information to inform your decision. And then personal privilege, you know, might just be the trainings going long, you need to use the restroom, grab a drink of water. You could ask for a point of personal privilege.
Real quick on the point of personal privilege, do you? I guess best practice, I'm assuming would also state how many minutes you want to.
Sure.
Continue it.
Yeah, but you're not required to, I mean, and you're not even required to use the words point of personal privilege, it it simply is. If you're not comfortable and you need a minute or two to become comfortable or you, the meeting's going long or. Um, I've even seen it used if somebody has a personal emergency that they're notified of, you can break the meeting. Um, ask for that, it's at the chair's discretion, you know, you don't want it to be used um to abuse the process, but. Um, it's there, it's allowed under Roberts rules. And then these are just some notes on public hearings that residents do have a right to be heard, you have to hold a hearing on certain items. Uh, you are not required to respond to questions or comments, and I see. Different chairs in different meetings handle this different ways and it's just your personal preference on what you'd like to do. Uh, I, there are some mayors in some cities and some planning commission chairs that like to ask questions of people that provide comments and like to. Uh, engage in that conversation, there are others that will just note the comment and move on and and never respond and. There's no right or wrong way, just simply that you're not required to answer questions. And certainly if somebody comes up and treats it like a deposition where they have the right to ask you question after question, you're not obligated. Uh, to conduct your business in that way. On land use decisions, the applicant always has a right to respond to public comment with information or with an argument. So the way you handled it on the first agenda item today was perfect, right, that you had some public comments and then you allow the applicant. To respond to those public comments. Again, that's one of those points where if you don't provide that opportunity to the applicant, then they have a little gap. Uh, to challenge a decision that you might make. Public comment can be limited, so you don't have to allow indefinite public comment, you just have to state at the beginning that. We have a full agenda, we're going to give everybody two or three minutes to comment. Uh, I see some chairs that will ask people to group together if they want to comment in the same way and then they can give the group. A spokesperson, they'll allow them a spokesperson and they can have five minutes to make their point fully. But you're not taking a vote, and so it's not how many people are for or against, it's to want, it's to make sure you receive the information the public has to give you. About these decisions. Uh, public hearings are closed by motion and vote, so you don't necessarily need a motion to open a public hearing. You do need a motion to close a public hearing. No member of the public can speak unless they're recognized by the chairperson, speakers have to state their name and address for the record. Uh, and that's a requirement, so you know who's speaking and so you know um where they are located within the city and can consider that. Uh, you can limit the context of what somebody is speaking about. So if the public hearing is on property A and somebody begins to talk about property X. You can say, I'm sorry, this public hearing is about property A, we're going to move on to the next person. And then the final note, of course, is if there's any personal attack, that shouldn't be allowed and you can remove somebody for that. Any any other questions on on order, you know, move on quickly to ethics. So if you're asking where is the line in ethics, I, in my opinion, that's the wrong question, you don't want to try to get too close to that line. You're governed by the municipal officers and employees Ethics Act. It establishes minimum standards, not the standards you want to govern yourself by, but minimum standards. Uh, it sets up a disclosure system for conflicts of interest and then finally it describes the crimes you can commit. As a public officer or employee. So when is disclosure required? Anytime you have an interest in a regulated business, you're doing business with the city. You have a personal financial interest or investment that's at issue or is affected by the decision in front of you. Or you're helping somebody on a city transaction, you have to make a written disclosure. It's not enough to just do it orally. And on the final one, if you're helping or advising somebody on a city transaction, there's, there are time deadlines when you have to make. That kind of disclosure, I would just advise you, if you have any of those circumstances, give me a phone call. And we can talk through it, our initial conversation would be privileged and I would advise you on how I think you ought to handle that situation to keep yourself safe. And to protect the decisions that the planning commission makes. Then during the meeting, when those items are on the agenda, if any of the items we just talked about apply, make an oral disclosure, so you would say. Um, I'm an officer in company A B C and company A B C has an interest in I in agenda item two. I'm going to recuse myself or not participate in that item. You have to do it during an open meeting and you have to do it before discussion on the topic, you can't do it after discussion on the topic. Now, here's where I give a big caveat, you're not required on most of those. Recusals or disclosures, or I'm sorry, on most of those written or oral disclosures. To recuse yourself from making a decision under state law, you are required under city code. Um, to recuse yourself in that kind of situation, you don't have to leave the meeting, they're still open, they're still public meetings. Um, you wouldn't participate in a closed session if there were to be a closed session on a topic, but you can remain in the room, you can remain in your seat. You would just not be part of that conversation and then you would not vote on the item when it comes up. What crimes can you commit? So if you use information that is protected, controlled or private. That you learn through your role on the planning commission, you can't use that information to further your economic interests, your friends' economic interests. Your family members' economic interests. You can't use your privilege to secure, you can't use your position to secure some special privilege for yourself. Uh, you can't accept, seek, solicit a gift of substantial value. The threshold on substantial value is anything over fifty dollars, so there is a small threshold under state law that if you have lunch with somebody. Uh, that would not be tantamount to a gift unless you're having a really expensive lunch. Uh, you can't provide access or advice to help somebody with city business without the disclosure that we talked about. Earlier, and I'll just note that if the economic benefit is over a thousand dollars, then the crimes are felony level. Uh, for these kinds of violations, and there are situations where this can come up in really well intentioned ways. And I would just encourage you, if the little voice pops up in your mind where you think, I wonder if this is a conflict of interest. Uh, give me a call and I can help you figure out whether it is, and my role really in that circumstance will not be. Uh, you know, shame or or trying to. Make sure that your dirty laundry is aired publicly, it will just be, I want to keep you safe and I want to protect the decisions that the planning commission makes and. That's it, and we'll figure out a way forward uh to do it in that way. Any questions about ethics before we move on? Okay, Kim, will you open up the powers and duties? Where are we on time, Trevor? I do apologize a little bit for the length on this, it's not my preference to do really, really long trainings, but you have a legal obligation to do an hour. So we will do an hour. And then we'll stop, so I'll just have Trevor or Kim give me a signal and we'll work through as much as we can. Okay, so. I'm gonna jump through this pretty quickly because a lot of you have already seen this. You have two different kinds of things that you'll do, you'll, you will help. Create land use regulations and you will make land use decisions. And the big difference between the two, and I'll, I'm not going to read all the text or or get really into depth on this, but. A land use regulation is changing the rules that would apply to property owners in the city. So an ordinance, a rezone, a development agreement, those more often than not are land use regulations. And your role in that context will be to hold the public hearing and then you will vet it and you will make a recommendation to the city council. The other kinds of things that come to you are like the earlier item on the agenda today, it's a land use decision. You're looking at an application, you're looking at the city code and you're saying, does the application square with what the city code requires? And you, in a very real way, are along with staff, are. The eyes, ears, arms and legs of the city to explore and and ask all the questions about that development or that proposal. To see whether it fits with what city code requires. There are some things that kind of straddle the line on these that you'll come across. Trevor and Kim will make note on agenda items to say, this is the kind of decision you're making. And we'll talk about why it's important to know that, because it changes the kind of information you can consider. And it changes the rationale you can apply to making your decisions. But more importantly, it changes what information you have to have as part of the record of the meeting when you make those recommendations. So the the main difference is. A land use regulation is a policy decision, it's do we want to allow. Commercial uses in this part of the city. And in that context, when you receive public comment and when you examine an issue, you can simply think, do I think it fits there? Uh, is it a good policy to put it there? Uh, if a lot of people don't like having it in that location, you can take that into account. And then you can make a recommendation based on what you think is best for the city in that circumstance. And as long as you have a rational basis for that decision, it will be supportable and we can defend that choice. When you're making a land use decision where you're looking at an application and doesn't fit with the law, the standard gets really different. You could have every resident in the city show up red faced with pitchforks and say, we don't like this. But if it fits within the land use regulation, you can't take into account their displeasure. If they come though and they say, we're worried about whether light from that location will spill onto our property. Will you examine whether the lighting complies with code, you can consider that. And you can look at it and you can make your recommendation based on the information provided. What you want to do is just make sure that is part of the record of of you making your decision and you could. Reject it if it doesn't comply with um state code. What you can't do is if a bunch of people come in and they say, I think this housing development's going to paint all the houses bright colors and I don't like bright colors. And you would have to say, I'm sorry, state code doesn't allow us to regulate paint color. And so we can't make the decision on that basis, even if they do come in, you know, with high letter houses. Any questions on on that point?
I like the call there because I think that's where sometimes we have, we've learned, like what is where our authority lies. And I think there's always, or there always seems to be a lot of confusion around this about what our role in the whole process is. Because the way I look at it is it's really similar to how you laid it out where. In the majority of cases, like we can't put our personal preference into it, we can't even take the the. Residents' personal preference into consideration, if it, if it advised by code, we are legally bound to move forward, right?
So I'll give you a little bit of a funny example, at least in my view of funny. Uh, there's a very wealthy community in the Salt Lake East bench that had an application come forward to remodel an old Taco Bell. Make it a taco shop, but they wanted to paint it pink. And they had people come and they had an hour of public comment of, we don't want a pink building in our city. But the code didn't regulate it, and so it was built and it was painted pink and it has a picture of a cat on the side. And it opened and people were upset until they ate the tacos. And they haven't had a complaint since, it's it's one of the favorite spots in the whole city and it, you know, it's pink. But you will sometimes see things that are really unpopular and you have to make your decision in that circumstance on the evidence in front of you, what the code says. And explain to people patiently that, you know, we understand your displeasure with this, but in this context, it's a land use decision. It's an administrative decision, not a legislative decision, and so we can consider. The evidence in front of us, the four corners of what's in the statute and what's in the application. And then we have to make our recommendation or our approval on that basis. Uh, the state laws, you know, is called L U D M A, it's the Land Use Development and Management Act. Uh, the point I'll just make here is that cities are a political subdivision of the state, so we're seeing a lot of things in the state legislature where. The legislature is asserting more and more authority over city decisions and you're going to, I expect in this session, see some changes in. How decisions are packaged and sequenced and brought to planning commissions and so some of what you do now may. Um, change, I'll leave it up to you all and to the legislature and the city officials, whether you think that's a positive change or a negative change. But I do expect it will change. Again, the city has the authority to make its own land use standards, there are certain things you have to do, you have to have a planning commission, you have to have an appeal authority. And you have to make a general plan and you will be part of. And you will be part of the planning commission and the general plan process. Generally, these are the themes in LUDMA. There's uh our state prioritizes private property rights over the rights of cities to regulate property. And so there's, there are lengthy processes involved when you regulate property. And if there's ever a question of interpretation, it typically skews the direction of the property owner. But you can regulate property in some ways. Uh you, once you make a land use decision, if it's made in the right way, it's binding. Uh ordinances have to be plainly written to be enforceable. And I'll, this is the smallest note on this page, but maybe the most important is to defend your decisions, process matters. And so if you follow the right process and you consider the right things, more often than not, we can defend those decisions. When you deviate from process, that provides a little foothold for anyone that wants to challenge your decisions to make that challenge and to succeed. And then, as we mentioned, tie goes to the applicant of the property owner. In the city, you have a legislative body, you have a land use authority and you have appeal authority. You're the land use authority and then you make recommendations on legislative items that come to the city council. The city council is the legislative body. And uh South Weaver uses an appeal authority that is a single individual hired by the city uh to consider land use appeals.
Do you mind diving just a little bit deeper into that land use authority because I do think that there's a huge misconception?
Okay.
Um because there are people that you are the land use authority and you should be able to do this, 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 but you talk to somebody else and they have a very different understanding of that. So for South Weaver, specific. What is the planning commission's role as a land use authority?
You, you have you have more duties than you do power in that kind of setting. And that can be difficult, I think, for an uninformed citizen to understand, right? That you, the city's opportunity to really affect land use is when it makes its land use regulations and goes through the legislative process. You can tailor things within the context of that law, but you can't go beyond that. So our paint color example is a you know, a really good one that you'll see sometimes. You'll see people upset about fences. You'll see people upset about how a building's oriented. And unfortunately, as long as they meet setbacks, access requirements, um things like that, those aren't areas where you have a lot of latitude um to change them. What you can do is make note of things that you don't like. And when the time comes to update the land use ordinances, then you can include those things and affect those decisions. But once an ordinance is in place, if an application is submitted and the application is complete, that landowner vests their rights to develop under that rule. And so you have to respect the fact that they have a vested land use right. And if you deny them that right, then there can be responsibility on the part of the city. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Legislative body in South Weaver is the city council. The land use authority is a little bit mixed because some decisions come to the city council that are still um land use authority decisions or administrative decisions. And one example of that is conditional use permit applications. They'll come to you, you'll have a role and then they'll go to the city council and the council has a role. And then your appeal authority, again, we um talked about, it's an individual hired by the city with um knowledge and experience in land use law. This is just a helpful slide for you to have of the kinds of decisions that are legislative, administrative, and then quasi judicial. I'm not gonna belabor this, but um you'll have it as a reference if you need to refer to it. And then I think we've talked a little bit already about these limitations. There are appeals and variances, and I'll just say quickly that the standard for a variance is established in state law. It's really, really rigid. And it only applies when the circumstances of a particular parcel of property are so unique that there's no way they could develop under the land use code. And you'll see it sometimes with differing terrain and and things like that, but it's very, very infrequent under the way state law's been written that you would have a variance um that would occur. Uh the city establishes the standard for review on land use appeals. Uh South Weaver's is on the record and so the appeal will really just be to see whether there were errors made in the decision-making process. And then if it's appealed to the courts, the standard that they'll apply is whether the ordinance was valid and then whether the application of the ordinance was valid. And when they look at the application of the ordinance, the words they use is that arbitrary, capricious, or illegal. Um arbitrary would mean I'm in a bad mood today and so I'm just gonna deny this so I can get home. Um capricious would mean it's painted pink and I like green and so I'm gonna deny it on that basis. And then illegal would be if you um took some action that was contrary to the law or that you took some action that was not allowed by the law or or under the ordinance, or if the ordinance were to violate um some constitutional principle or something like that. One that you'll see a lot on illegality are ordinances that regulate occupancy. And it's fairly well-established federal law that a single family is four or more unrelated people. And so if you regulate tighter than that, that kind of thing can be overturned. Or if you have a law that doesn't afford somebody due process. And then a few best practices, but I don't know that we need to belabor these points. I think we've talked about most of them. Uh be clear in what you do, follow processes in what you do, uh seek advice from staff, have them do your work for you if you uh need more information on things. And then uh make those decisions in the best interest of South Weaver when you're making legislative decisions and make those decisions according to how you understand the law and the application in front of you when you're making administrative decisions. Then, and your decisions will be defensible and they'll be good. And uh that's it. Any other questions or topics in your discussion?
No, this is really good. Uh Jamie, thank you.
Thanks for having me with you and
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, item number seven, public hearing in action on preliminary, preliminary plan uh for deer run townhomes. Um I don't have to read that whole thing, do I, Trevor? No, okay. Uh I think I'm gonna follow the same process as with the prior item. So Trevor, if you want to give us a higher level overview on kind of what staff has put together so far, and then we'll go from there.
You bet. Okay, so this um we've, we've heard a little bits from this because this uh development agreement has come before the city council for their basic review. They have not approved development agreement. I think that's important to note at this point. They've just seen, because a development agreement is um a site-specific zoning ordinance for this project, the city council has jurisdiction over that legislative process. And so typically, when you see this development agreement is that uh a concept is brought forward to the city council. City council directs staff on how to proceed with that, that development agreement. In this case, we had formed a development agreement committee that was made up of uh the mayor, uh uh council member Halverson and council member um Petty and um myself, David Larson, city manager, um and uh Jeremy Davis, our, our chair, sat on that committee. Did I miss, I didn't miss anybody, did I? Okay. Um. And we reviewed that development agreement with the developer, worked through um items to, to get a draft development agreement ready. Then we presented that to the city council to see if um that was something that basically it's a deal or no deal, like are you, are you good to keep going or are we just at a stopping point? Um typically, the reason of doing that is just to make sure that we're not wasting the planning commission's time on reviewing something that the city council is just gonna deny anyways because they, they really didn't like it in the first place. So um you weren't intentionally kept out of the process. We just wanted to make sure that we had something actual workable for you to review and make comments on that. Um so in our, in our discussion tonight, um that's good. I, I think it's really important for us, that to be the primary part of our discussion. Um as we, as we look at all of the individual pieces that are connected to that, but because that's a site-specific zoning document for that area, um think of it as, as a additional overlay zone to the underlying zone that um that kind of frames the whole ability for us to approve a site plan or, or a plat or anything um of that, of that nature.
And just to insert real quick, Trevor, when you say the underlying zone, you're referring to the rezone to the R seven, is that correct?
Yeah, so I was gonna, um so currently the zoning is commercial overlay. In the development agreement, it requires the developer to seek for a rezone for the R seven. So this, this is just a weird timing thing that is happening. So because uh the city council directed staff and the planning commission to review the residential multifamily seven code after um, after the approval of the gateway project. Uh that was um, I believe, May last year, June last year. It all blends together, but last year was a long time ago. Significant, that, that time is significant because it's longer than six months. So typically, when we have, when we're working on a code, we have six months to work on that code and get it in place. And we can, um, we can kind of stop development during that time for those applications that come in for that, right? Now, after that six months, we, we have to allow those applications to continue forward. We can continue to work on the code throughout that six months. But they can make application and are vested rights um at the code at that time. So when this development came forward and has the rezone request as part of it, the rezone request had to be residential multifamily seven uh to match what's currently in code. Now, what I would recommend is, is we can do the public hearing for the rezone tonight. What I would recommend is we can wait to hold that uh recommendation until we we get a better sense of what's gonna happen in the city council meeting in the, in the March meeting, right? For, for the rezone portion, right? So because you can recommend, you know, I recommend the R seven rezone or I can recommend um R seven pending the decision based on the R five uh strategic growth overlay zone, um things like that. The um, the rezone request can be amended if the, the um if the code is placed, put in place, they can amend that. Or um when the city council goes to, to rezone, they can rezone based on what current zoning is and say, we're not doing the R seven, but we are gonna do the R five SG or R five or whatever that might be. Um and they can amend the development agreement at that time. Does that make sense? But before I move on, I know it, it sounds, but we tried to make it as simple as possible. Um because it, it's just a weird timing issue on those things. So um we can talk about that more in depth later. Uh the gross site plan is three point one seven five acres. Uh that includes the um the detention, retention, retention basin, detention. Oh, I was right the first time. The detention basin um on the northern portion of the, the, the plat. So tonight, what we're be, gonna be looking at is that development agreement, the preliminary plat, the site plan, an architectural review, uh the improvement plans uh for the project. Uh they have also not uh submitted a landscape plan as of yet. Um again, this is part of the, the whole uh preliminary plan process. And so uh we can review that at the next meeting. And I also want to emphasize that um because, because this is a development agreement conversation, because there's a development agreement that's a part of it. Um that is a site-specific zoning document, so that's a legislative decision by the city council. So we do have a little bit more discretion on what we can recommend to the city council for this, this development, right? Um we wanna, we wanna be careful about being too arbitrary and precious and, and things like that, but um but it is a legislative decision and so we can uh place in um some extra provisions outside of code. Those just have to be reflected in the development agreement. Um the development agreement isn't to throw away code, but to again supplement what code is currently in place and then it enhance or, or modify um with that site-specific zoning document. Um so as, as we, I did my initial planning review. There wasn't any areas of major concern on that. Just, just to note that the density for the project is a, a little over twelve units per acre. Um capping out at three, thirty-five unit. That was a, a number that was given to uh the developer and the, from the city council. And so that's what they had developed to. Um obviously, it's not approved by the city council. That was just the recommendation at that time. Um and so that's what, what was moved forward in the application. Um this is, this is a, a variance from the R seven code, uh right? Uh uh five units an acre more than the R seven code. Um in exchange, we had a, a lot of discussion about the design and the finishes. We're allowed to do that with this development agreement um because we're uh because it's within a development agreement, right? And the, the developers of, um, and entering a mutual agreement with the city. And the setbacks are also something that is different uh from the, uh from the standard code. Um we put in the provision in the development agreement for a zero lot line allowing for a townhome configuration and a townhome plat. Uh the lot widths, as we reviewed, are not, are not put into the development agreement. And so staff would recommend adding an, an amendment to the development agreement to uh put the lot width at twenty-three feet, um allowing for the townhomes as, as a minimum. Um lot width, allow for the townhomes that we have there. We do have a provision in the, in the development agreement requiring a twenty-two by twenty-two foot garage. And so the additional footage is just for the, the building, right? Um they need a little bit more overhang to, to set that garage and to fill the, the walls connecting the units. Um we don't see, uh that's, that's a one-foot difference from the, the R five code. Has a minimum width of twenty-four feet. It's not a, a giant departure from the code. Um the draft, R five code that, that we'll be reviewing later. Um but we uh we feel comfortable with that because we have the garage widths um set at that. Um there's no major concerns from the access points on the development. Um the, the previous project that was approved for this, this site um had similar access points and, and so those, those don't have a lot of um issues with the city. Uh as, as I reviewed them, developer will dedicate a private right-of-way. Um and we'll have to dedicate easements within that right-of-way for uh the utilities that go through it. Uh and those, those need to meet the city standards as, as detailed in Brandon's report. The private right-of-ways do meet city code, so they did not need to be um addressed in the development agreement. Um this does have um something that is different, is a, is shared dry, uh driveway for the unit. Um this, this is permitted. This uh allows for the setbacks between the buildings. Um and so we, we feel that, that this is covered in that. Uh it is a little bit different use. Um but um but we, we are, we feel comfortable with that. Um the fencing isn't stated on the site. They, they'll have a six-foot tall solid vinyl fence. Uh masonry or equivalent fence, those will, that will be required in the development um between that development, all or density residential zones. And it uh shall be ra- rated to withstand the proper wind load uh that dictated itself, we were city standards. That's found right, right within the um, the draft development agreement as well. Um open space uh calculations just had uh an error, so they needed to fix that on the open space um portion of the property or the, the uh data table on that. And so they just need to fix that. But they are required nineteen thousand square feet of open space. And I think it's important to note that that open space is found mainly on this primary um property and doesn't necessarily need to include the retain, detention basin. It's located down in the north, although they have that calculated in the open space. Um and um and I think that's pretty much it. There are some notes from the um the, our engineers, you need to add anything to that? Yeah, that was a little lengthy. I'm sorry I talked very long on that. So um as of, as of now, that's, that's the presentation and then I can answer any questions after the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you.
Trevor is the
Okay, thank you. Trevor is the
um
The developers are here. We have Henry and Joel that are here. Jeff, I do that every time, every time. If either of you would like to um stand up and make some some comments based on what's already been said. And then I'll just like the previous owner, I'll have you sit down and then let the public hearing commence. And then we'll invite you back up to the podium if that's right.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Henry D. Verona, eleven thirty-one west, fifteen eighty north. I've worked with the developer.
Um my name's Jeff Klaus and uh I'm a builder and and a South Weaver resident as well. Uh so I don't, I mean, there's, I don't know, are we gonna dissect this whole thing?
Yeah, it it they'll have, they'll have, I'm sure they'll have questions on those, the question portion. Yeah, I think maybe just the high level.
Yeah, just high level, if you want to address anything that you've already that's already been covered, um or if you already know there's some concerns. If you want to pre-address those that you don't think are already called out.
There's just a couple, um uh the 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 garage dimensions were twenty-two by twenty-two, but that was just based on the type A units, which are the ones up top. Um the council wanted us to to widen the garages because they were concerned that it they wouldn't be able to fit two cars because there is no driveway for residents to park in. The type B buildings do have driveways, so that twenty-two by twenty-two was just or for the for the type one in itself. Um I think the the open space was was covered. Um and I think the other issue of we haven't talked about that yet, I guess, but we will.
No, we didn't, but we do need to. That's the only other one.
Yeah, so it's it's the
Twenty-five percent.
The twenty-five percent, item number sixteen on a on a development agreement. Uh the homeowners association rental regulation. So this was discussed at council and they recommended twenty-five percent and the owner presently, we don't have any any uh restrictions on on the development agreement as it's for the previous project for condominiums. So um just based on what the economy is now and houses just aren't selling, we would just like to reserve the right to, if we ha- we can't sell them, we would have to rent them. We want to sell them. We don't want to keep them, but if they won't sell, we would we want to hang on to them and rent them until the economy got better.
Construction window.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That would kill the project.
Yeah, because we're doing it in phases. So I mean, if we go to phase one and things aren't selling, we'd have to rent them so we could press on phase two and phase three and things, but we 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 don't think that's going to happen, but we just want to be prepared to that. And then also the future homeowners, if they decided they wanted to sell because of losing a job or a PCF in the military or uh death in the family or illness, that we wouldn't want to restrict them on on being able to rent out until they could sell as well. So um so I mean, it's it the developer recommended fifty percent, so we we probably liked it in the same. And I think that was noted in the in the minutes of council on December fifteenth, so.
Sorry, what was fifty percent? Oh, fifty percent rental.
Yes.
And I would just like to add one thing. These these are townhomes will be on the high end, I mean, four hundred, four fifty. When you have a renter renting a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, they're not your bag of bonds that are just running a eight hundred square foot two bedroom that's gonna destroy the neighborhood. And they don't really have respect for the 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 property that they're in. So these will be uh a different class of people.
Yeah. That's all I was wanting to discuss and I guess answer questions and at the public comment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um I'll look for a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing um on agenda item number seven. Um as stated in the agenda.
Okay, second.
I second that motion. All in favor? Hi, yes. Oh, yeah.
All right. So the time is now yours, if anyone would like to step to podium.
Um
Could you move the mic towards your mouth a little more? You have a very soft voice. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Eddings. I'm at twenty-six forty-five east, seventy-eight hundred south. Um at the December thirteenth city council meeting, we provide a public comment in opposition to the proposed playground and dog park adjacent to our property. In Mr. Cook's new concept plan, we provided the city council with a list of many reasons why we do not want the playground and dog park next to our property. During the dialogue of the meeting, council members Albert and Petty also agreed that there should not be a dog park or a playground on that property, and all the amenities should be retired within the upper proper upper property. They also stated that the property adjacent to ours should just be the detention basin and nothing more. In the revised plan being brought before you tonight, Mr. Cook has removed the playground, but has retained the dog park and enlarged it. Please consider our previous request as to not allowing a dog park directly adjacent to our property and leaving that area just as a detention basin. Um the plans for that dog park is also on the canal right of way. Um we spoke to the canal supervisor and they stated that they would not allow a dog park to be on that property. Um and to um the the owners, different kind of people can also be degenerate. It doesn't matter what type of person they are. It doesn't mean that they still won't do the um do damage to the property or make it a mess or just not care. That happens all the time, and it doesn't matter the style or the type of house you have or how much you spend on it. Well, and my question is, who's going to maintain this property? Because it's not maintained now. The sidewalks aren't ever cleaned off. The only people that I've known to maintain it was my husband and myself. And that's also a concern as it adjacent to my property.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't have this on my written written one, but as a follow-up from Mrs. Mrs. Eddings. Uh does the stormwater from the main project drain through the detention basin? And if it's made into a dark dog park, if so, it must drain into the sewer system because of the feces and urine and everything else that would be associated with the dog park.
Can you state your name?
Paul Stern. South Weaver City. Sorry, Michelle. Okay, my public comments and questions are for agenda eight seven. Um one of the things in the initial is talking about thirty-five lot townhouse class in the rezone from C dash O to R dash seven. First, it first question I have is, how can South Weaver take an action on a preliminary plan when there is no current zone that would permit thirty-five townhomes on two point nine one four acres? Please explain. I know that Trevor tried to explain it on it, but I'm still confused on what he said. The new the new R five SG zone being proposed is planned to replace the R seven zone. Under the proposed ordinance, which is on page seventy-eight of the eighty-seven of the packet, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two. With that restriction, it only permits a maximum of eight units per acre based on the R five SG with a maximum of sixty percent. Sixty percent over five gives you eight. With with an out that that's only occurred with an outstanding design concept. Sorry for this. I wrote some scribble notes on this and I'm quoting those. That would equate to a total of twenty-four units on this parcel. I do not see anything in the design proposal rises to an outstanding level. Please explain your thirty-five again. PC package thirty-six thirty-seven, the engineering review. There are many unanswered questions posed in this engineering review that should be addressed before a preliminary approval is made. As pointed out by the engineering reviewer, the phases proposed appear to be out of sequence for the needed infrastructure of its development. The city does not want to be put in a position to preliminary approve a design that in the future may be untenable with the next phases and thus potentially force the city to further accept slash permit amending the design, possibly to the city's debt joint. Packet page thirty-eight fifty-six, project preliminary design. A few of my many concerns with the Deer Hill Drive roadway between phases one and two are the road appears to be quite steep with a rise of about twenty to twenty-five feet over a run of a hundred thirty-three feet. I have a concern about the ability to egress up the road after a snowstorm. At the top of the road is a sidewalk that is traversed by many children and others on a daily basis. I recommend that a twenty-five foot flat pad be installed prior to the sidewalk for both sight distance issues and the ability to stop prior to the sidewalk, especially in inclement weather. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Grant, twenty-six twenty-two Deer Run Drive. Four years ago, when Lofts was approved uh for the first time, R twenty-five was in place. As a result, they had uh proposed the development of seventy-four units. Uh we opposed it because of driveway spaces and all. It came down to sixty-two units. And then they had the CEO commercial overlay, which is still in place. Now that we are applying for, they are applying for R seven, I would say that thirty-five units doesn't make sense. Three acres times seven would be twenty-one units. And if it's R five, the modified version, then it's eight units per acre. That brings the math to twenty-four units. To Paul was saying, how come we came to thirty-five units a- about a month ago, maybe two months ago? Um Joseph Cook, the builder and uh the city council, they were discussing and Mr. Cook would say forty-two units and city council would say thirty-one unit. So let's meet in the middle. It's like haggling over a car. How can that math even be possible? Whatever zone you are approving, that you do the simple math and hard and fast, that number should be followed. Fairness to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Bitten at uh twenty-six thirty-five east, seventy-eight hundred south. Um not really opposed to the number count like gentlemen uh expressed earlier on the thirty-five by recommendation of the city council. Um few of my questions are is this, is that uh in comments is this is they commented earlier that the separate parcel, which is kind of the detention? Ah, got it. Detention basin is uh is it uh a separate parcel and now is going to be considered open space. I've been in planning uh in zoning type of environments for quite some time. And I've never seen a separate parcel included as a open space, especially as it's detached from this. If it is, like Mrs. Eddings said, and I witnessed the caretaking of her husband doing that as much as he could, which has never been a by the property owner attempted for cleaning or clearing or maintaining. We need to have some kind of landscape plan in place to be able to give aesthetics to that frontage and also to be maintained. And that needs to be under development agreement. Um but I still in question the open space requirement for a separate parcel. Um also, I'm not sure what the fencing is going to be. I know there was talk about first a wall, then a fence. But I just want to make sure that the fencing is aesthetic, especially on the north. That would be a buddy basically after the canal, my backyard. And so I'd like to make sure that it is blinded somehow, whether it be vinyl or fencing or not with a maintainable clause clause. I'm very surprised about the renting uh proposal here tonight by the developer and builder. If there is such a thing as this, that we need to have some kind of overlay to identify which ones are going to be rentals for simple fact that we hold them to a certain amount. And uh my question is, I really don't want to see phase four or five in a type of for any type of condition. The other comment I've had, which I stated earlier in a city council meeting, I'm appalled at the design features that are now in place as the um manholes on the east side of seventy-eight herself. It looks like we live in Montana with with missile silos about ready to have missiles come out of them. They're all cement. At one time, I concerned myself with the mayor that they has opened. I know they've been covered since because I saw kids waiting for buses down in them. That's confined space, not. They need to be covered. But it's the aesthetics is just so displeasing to see those three main silos now uh sticking out of the ground. Will they be there? I think there needs to be part of that landscape plan, some kind of softening of that with uh with the design that's happening currently. And then like anything, uh I know that a lot of the route of traffic will be favored uh on the uh twenty-seven hundred east. But there is also times where alternative uh turns will be made and uh use seventy-eight hundred south for whatever the reasons. Like I said before in the previous uh development, that seventy-eight hundred south is a subgrade designed road. It needs to be improved on any type of development. And I would like to make a suggestion that we do a moratorium on any development attached to seventy-eight hundred south until that road is improved through the development.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to face public hearing on this uh Deer Run.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, yes. Yeah, two that time. That too. Okay, um thank you for everyone for your comments. Uh we appreciate it. Um we'll go ahead and open it up for the commissioners to ask questions. Um there's a lot in here, um and I think it would probably be best to tackle the development agreement first and then exciting that the most complex. So if we want to have our discussion around the development agreement first, and then we can move on from that, I think that would be the best use of our time. Okay, so having said that, Commissioner McFadden, would you like to start us off?
Um I guess I have a a really quick question. What we have before us here um in this uh this proposed uh plat here. I don't see the detention basin that um indicated. I also don't see the um dog run um indicated on here.
You have to, uh there is a indication. I I would look for it too.
Okay. And I apologize, I have no other way to look at it except for what's in front of us here. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, did you want the developers to respond at all?
Oh, right, yes, yes, thank you.
So which, which one, you want to tackle, you want to do mine first or?
Okay, as far as the dog park, that is a typo, it's not supposed to be there, there will be no dog park on that property. And this is the wrong place if you wanted to anyways, without all the long stuff now, so just strike that. And then, yeah, I think that was. Yeah, unless, I think the rest was probably.
The open space.
Open, open space, there's, there's sufficient, the table showed either sufficient just on the other property where the homes are.
The larger tract.
Yeah. It's just, we just, we just put that amount into the, it is open space.
Do you want to address ongoing maintenance for landscape?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the landscape plan is being developed right now. And so it, it will show trees and shrubs and the HOA will actually take care of.
Out of budget.
There's in the budget for, you know, weekly mowings and it won't carry on like it is now, it's a construction site now. So it will be both the detention area and all the open space. And there are some areas out front of the homes that are, that are not green and they'll be landscaped as well with sod and shrubs and we just don't have the landscape plan at this point.
And then they had mentioned concern about the fencing, I know that on here it was showing vinyl fence, is that confirmed?
Yes.
And that's a solid vinyl fence there, right? Okay. All right.
Well, it's just, well, they're, they're not going to be removed, they'll be, they'll be backfilled, it's just because we've gone from sixty-four units to now trying to go thirty-five, we have to move two of them, so that's why they're not backfilled because if this is approved, then we will, we have to relocate those, that's why we have them backfilled.
They won't look like that.
And, and the ones on the north side will be, there's a, there's a berm that runs around the whole detention pond. So those will be backfilled and covered up, but we're not, we have to dig through that to put storm drain in to go to seventy-eight hundred, so that's why that's not done at this point.
So the, the final look will not have any, but.
Just the manhole. Cover, cover again, well, just the cover itself.
Right, on the surface.
Yes, either in pavement or landscaping.
Okay, back to Commissioner McFadden for any specific questions?
If I could just maybe let things marinate a little bit more, I don't have anything like really pressing at the moment, I, I will hear them a little bit, but.
That's fine.
I can, yeah, take my turn later.
Okay, Commissioner Schola, did you have any questions, concerns that you'd like to?
I'm kind of in the same, but I guess I have just one, it's probably just minor, but on the, I mean, I assume the fence will be maintained by the HOA as well. So when it inevitably blows a hole in it at some point, that.
That doesn't happen here.
Okay. That just, I, I have some others, but I'll, I just had that real quick, but.
It will be maintained by the HOA.
Okay.
All right, so you'd like to?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, a little bit.
Commissioner Losi.
I don't even know where to begin. Um, we're specifically focusing on the development agreement and progress in there?
Yeah.
Um, okay, then I'll leave the other stuff for a second. As far as the parties, it looks like there's an acknowledgement of removing Deer Run Plaza as an owner of the property. As they're no longer relevant or party to the transaction and then the owner is going to be Deer Run Investments. Can you maybe just explain a little bit more about the removal of that party? So it's item number two, parties on the development agreement, I'm just wondering, who is Deer Run Plaza? Given the current agreement in place, I'm guessing? And then running forward is Deer Run Investments LLC or its successors in interest and or assigned? Who is going to be the actual parties to this development agreement?
So this one will be, this one will end up being Deer Run Investments, the name will just change with the development agreement.
Okay. So who's being removed though? Because obviously we've had a development agreement, the previous one in place. It's what?
It's sort of an error, it was never a Deer Run Plaza.
Okay, so that was just an error that's being cleaned up?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, I'll go to item number five on the development agreement, the geotechnical. Given that this area, the entire parcel, we've located in our sensitive lands. And I have a lot on this one. Specifically with our sensitive land, making sure that our development standards are being followed, drainage erosion, vegetation, revegetation. I have concerns with the two entrances and exits and the sloping and the percent grade decreasing. Especially where it comes down to that first, I guess, road that goes in between the two buildings right there in the middle and just wanting to make sure that you are in a high winds area. There is sufficient sloping, I guess tagging on to that too is that the sensitive lands, like the setbacks, I just, it looks like there's ten feet at the front. It's twenty-five feet, we should have twenty-five feet, given our code. So I'm curious why we've basically cut that and reduced that more than a half.
Yeah, that was a request from the developers to have a ten-foot step back on the front rear end side of their building. Placed in the development agreement and so that was passed through the development agreement committee, city council. That, that wasn't an area of concern for them.
Really?
They had originally requested a five-foot side step back, we had, we had moved that up to ten, that was what it's down to there.
And I guess that's where I'm struggling, only because if basically the R seven code is the underlying zone and that code should be ruling, the development agreement kind of works as that overlay, which allows us to change things. I just wonder, are we justified with that development agreement and giving it the ten percent versus, or the ten that setback versus the twenty-five?
So that's a good question and maybe the legal context will help. Help the owners understand what you can do and what you believe is in place. But the development agreement really is a done document. If the, if, if you think of it as you are writing zoning codes that will apply only to this parcel and will occur through the development agreement, then keep in mind that when you're making that decision, the legislative decision usually apply your own policy preference. So if you like it, don't like it, you can make a recommendation based on that. So there are some things where we would say R seven demands that in kind of a rigid way, you were allowed in a development agreement apart from that and you can just express what your policy rationale is or parties would not have accepted to change this, you know, especially in the region. And then things of same information would apply to the comments that we make about, you know, why the unit numbers are higher and. It's your job not mine to decide really deep into the side of the deal. There is one unique advantage to doing something like this with the development agreement in this certain stance is that state codes was changed a year ago, as you take away the authority cities to make some requirements that would get at the architectural quality, close materials, get them to the I G O N, so this is development. And last, you will provide some advantage and convince the developers to either show that they don't show the policy. And in that context, you can apply and require different components. So in a sense, part of what's being negotiated and changed is a little bit more density over that to get to a share. There's a lot of, and higher quality is very effective by play on that.
And that I'm fine with, like, and I, I, at first when I saw the thirty-five units and knowing that the R seven zone does allow, you know, the twenty units versus your twenty to twenty-two depending upon what acreage you're utilizing. I'm just trying to figure out is, are we getting enough of a say in some of those other areas to justify that increased density?
I can, I can say that the, the ten-foot setbacks was definitely discussed in our, when we were looking at it. And we felt like the ten-foot in this layout, the layout was a little bit different when I was initially looking at it, but we had a good fifteen-minute discussion on if that was going to be sufficient or not, or not. And the general consensus was for this request, we felt like ten feet was sufficient to ensure security and to ensure that there that the look and feel was still good and it wasn't, it wasn't, I guess like my, the biggest comparison I have was like Harriman, right? So Harriman is crazy, here and there.
Oh, yeah.
And the, the, our consensus was ten foot was a, to, to Jamie's point, a good negotiated spot instead of forcing the twenty-five foot, which, which could possibly have made this option maybe untenable.
Can I?
Just for some context.
Can I bring something up and, and ask? In your conversation with the committee, was the, was the park strip and sidewalk distance also considered as part of that concession? Because this does look like a, a much wider sidewalk and park strip combination that matches that. So, I mean, am I correct in saying that the distance from the frontage of the home to the actual curb that is adjacent to the road is more like?
It's more like sixteen feet.
Yeah, sixteen or eighteen feet. I don't see a dimension there on exactly what that is, but that looks larger than ten feet right there.
What is the standard park strip in that space, Brandon? Including the sidewalk and everything?
But none of that being set to change, it's just the existing sidewire that's already in place and park strip, correct?
None of that is being proposed to change.
Does not be wide enough.
Okay.
That was one of the, I believe that was one of the things that we had, we had talked about, yeah. Yeah, is that there's still, at least on that front side, there's still a good amount of space between where.
Let me add that, I'm just talking about from twenty-seven hundred.
Just along twenty-seven hundred. And, and I will say my biggest concerns with the buildings, the, the ones that are interior to the community, I think are being set at a profile that's not going to be obtrusive. It's not going to be blocking, you know, mountain views, things like that, the fencing obviously is going to help. I have, I have concerns over the buildings that are fronting twenty-seven hundred. Especially given the neighboring homes where they're located, the height that you see. You know, and, and I know and I recognize that there is a development that this is being pattered off of, that's already built. That's located in North Salt Lake, I Google mapped it. I highly recommend anybody that wants to see a physical application of these concepts to go out and look at that because it was a little eye-opening because there are retaining walls. Because that's the other, is all of the access points to these units that are along twenty-seven hundred are basically a walkway with cement stairs, correct?
Yeah, so you will actually walk, different than North Salt Lake.
Okay.
I built that project down there.
Okay.
So different than North Salt Lake, you'll walk into the second floor off of twenty-seven hundred.
So we'll only have two floors.
Two stories from the, from the road and in the back, because of the grid, and then the back you'll have the three.
The three, okay.
That was my question, where, is that front, that top row the only place where you'd have those three stories exposed?
It's actually, the type A's go along the front of twenty-seven hundred and then the driveway adjacent, just to the, to the west of that, those are those units too. There's twenty-one of those and there's fourteen of the.
Okay.
We, we call them two stories because they've got to walk out.
Because of the grave.
And those are the ones that basically run the.
Gear, whatever.
Along the canal, let's just say that basically will be the ones.
Those are the big ones, yeah. Above the canal.
We're talking about the ones on twenty-seven hundred.
On twenty-seven hundred.
And the ones directly behind them, yes.
So the.
Those are going to be two stories above, well, at grade floor one, floor two, go around the back.
And then walk, walk up based on where the garage is.
Are, are we speaking of type twos or type threes or? Yeah, so the, the, on the driveway side, it'll be three stories because you'll drive in the garage.
Right.
And then the ones across the way, across the driveway to the west will be three stories, front and back.
Got it, okay, so that still is within that thirty-five or thirty-eight?
Yes.
Is it thirty-eight feet or thirty-five?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight in the development agreement.
So we're giving a little, what, three more feet of height?
Would you like the other question answered?
Which other question?
The geotech that she was concerned about, we have a geo study, so that will be passed on to the architect, make sure that they're built with the winds and the geotechnical report.
And the sloping and.
The sloping, I maybe.
On the roads.
Address Brandon because I'm sure Jeff could answer, but the concern about the slope that we have in there, we have, we've met, yeah, we, we, we meet sta, we meet fire department standards for fighting fire off of them, so. That's what we've taken our guidance off of.
The only thing I can say is that there's nothing in these plans that shows the slope yet because these are preliminary. So I'm not sure how these slopes were calculated, I'm probably going to maybe guessing on the, the structures, sizes and where those entrances would be. So I'm, I, if, if there are any comments to be made, I will make them once I see what they're proposing.
Okay, and I guess that's just, that's an area of concern right now and all we had, I think, was the one slide that showed kind of the elevation changes and the topography. And I want to say there's like a forty foot, is it twenty foot, forty two, forty-two feet that dropped. And, and again, you know, most of us have seen this, it levels off kind of in the middle and then drops down again towards the canal. Where the one five flex that's located on that, do my direction, south end of the development along twenty-seven hundred. It, it flattens there at the top and it looks like a lot of that is going to be dug out for retaining.
So you're, are you, Commissioner Losi, are you talking about page thirty-eight of the, that?
Page forty-two.
Hold on.
This is a little context, why I went up. Unless there's another case you know that I am not remembering.
Hold on.
And those are, those are the existing grades.
Yes.
Yeah. It is page thirty-eight of the packet.
Right, yeah.
So, and I'm just going based on where you got the readings of what.
Yes, there is, there is, the existing topography is like, significant.
Yeah. So, and I think that we're trying to figure the slope and we have to wait for that.
Yes, right, I guess, I'm, I'm just saying, until I see what they're proposing with their grading plan, I can't really call it on that.
In fact, the, the engineer, when we, when we, we took the first brush at this to see if this would work, we stayed within the parameters to be able to fight fire on them because we know that that's the standard that we need to maintain. So we did this. The engineer kept, kept, kept all that in mind when he designed this project.
That was something that came up in our council.
The big thing. And I know there was conversation about, you know, the, the two five flex buildings. I will give you my two cents and they're my two cents. I would really like to see building, or I guess the unit number one oh one and three oh one go away and become open space because I feel where that comes into play in terms of the landing area that's going to be needed so that cars turning into and out of have sufficient sightline. Because you are developing on a curve and a, on a road. And right now we have issues on Deer Run Drive where cars, even if they stop where the, you know, intersection and all that layout is, they still have to come out almost into the intersection in order to see cars coming. So that's just, that is a, I don't know if I could justify it with the sensitive lands or just the safety, you know, and again, until we actually see what the topography and the slopes and all that stuff's going to look like, but I would like those to become more flexibility.
Would that be addressed in the mine of site?
Yes.
Okay.
That we don't have yet.
Right.
Okay.
And like that whole building, that one hundred series could potentially slide to the south to accommodate that if necessary.
To get your line of sight.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it could because of the retaining that's going to be necessary there, because of the existing slope. So.
Well, sometimes the, the actual building is you have.
That's the retainer.
Retainer, yeah, they'll just be built.
Into it.
It, it could, again, these are, these are questions that are, are significant and will be addressed with. And so it's good to bring up. And so it's good to bring out now who the owners are.
And it is something too that speaks to the setbacks because I know that, okay, ten foot was kind of what was discussed in the committee and with council and and all that stuff, but is is ten sufficient? And again, knowing that the underlying zone of R seven, if that rezone is allowed, you know, it's twenty five, I feel personally, and I'm not saying go twenty, but is fifteen, does having that extra fight fee give us more of those safety, you know, addressments? Um.
And I would say on that one, it would it would be on us to prove that it's that's not being comprehensive.
Yeah, and I guess that's where, again, we need to have the actual.
And and to clarify, the full constructions, the horizontal and vertical civil drawings will be typically given during the final stage.
Mm-hmm.
And so that that would be on the next meeting that we would have, so we would have that, and that's why I'd recommend us having the conversation about the development agreement, making these notes of things that we would maybe want to include.
Yeah.
And then we can review them and see if they still are valid to to include or or not.
Um, okay. And I will, I I'm not a fan of the number of phases. Um, I understand that building an entire, you know, development all at once may not be viable, but all of the infrastructure, correct?
If it was a year or two ago, that would.
Yes, but given time.
Do the whole thing one phase, yeah.
I think five is too many. Um, I don't think anybody wants to have this be a construction site for the next ten years um as we release phases and build phases and sell phases and things like that.
Can I ask a quick question on that? Just was there a very specific reason why you chose five phases that you could articulate?
Just for the exact reason of the economy, if we were doing this four years ago, we might have had two.
Okay, so it.
Financing.
Financing is 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 key by health and today.
Yeah, so cost avoidance, I guess, right?
Yeah, and we're doing a lot on on three other projects right now.
Got it.
So if 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 it changes and we can do two phases at once, we'll uh, we don't wanna drag this on, we wanna.
Or if there's a way to even reduce the number, so instead of five phases, four.
Yeah, time is not your friend.
I don't know.
I think that.
I'm trying to stay on the development agreement and address the thing.
Oh, I think it's important, if if there are elements of the plat or the the site plan that need to be addressed in the development agreement or feel that you feel are in conflict, I don't want to say you can't talk about anything outside of development agreement. It just might be he- helpful to connect it back to development agreement because that that really guides this whole development, right? But as we've talked about, there's a lot that they're asking for concessions on our current code and 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 writing that specifically to that. Um, with development agreements, wanna keep in mind, what is the city gaining versus what is the developer gaining in in this this conversation, right? And and like Jamie expressed, this is, this is a legislative document. You can make a decision to the po- the city council, the planning commission, obviously has to be a majority decision, um but you can s- make that recommendation to the city council to do whatever on this because it is a legislative.
And that's, and I wanna get it right, because I, again, we've all been, I I think for the majority, have seen the the previous plans, have seen the changes, have seen, you know, a- and that was, I I know that Commissioner Boatright is not here. Um, he unfortunately is probably the one planning commissioner that sat in a planning capacity, and it's unfortunate he couldn't be here. Um, but it was why the change, why now, um, coming and asking for the rezones towards a residential, because I know that was something that was asked for at the time, and the answer was, we can't do it. We can't make it financially viable without the commercial, but now obviously that doesn't appear to be the case. I don't know if that's something that's important enough to address since he isn't here, but that was a question that he had asked.
Yeah, he submitted those through the public comment, so they will be attached in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
If correct, he had, I think he sent them in the public comments, so they'll be attached in the minutes of the meeting.
Yep.
So he did, he recently sent, oh, man, it was just.
He sent them on February sixth.
He sent it through, maybe he just wanted to.
Um, I believe it just came to each of the commissioners, it did not go through public comment.
Okay.
Yeah, it was an email.
So that could be attached in the.
Could I ask for that to be attached or no?
Any of you could simply say that you would like to.
I I would, I would actually like it just because, again, he's the one commissioner, you know, because he had an issue as well with the phasing. Um, the number of units not aligning with the R seven zone, um and just questioning, you know, the two stories, the three stories, you know, the the building heights. Um, I think it's all things that are within this development agreement for us to to weigh in on, given what's been stated. Oh, and the rentals.
And then Mr. Chair, just be sure where that's being added as part of the record and part of the public comment. That's really how we're coming to fix that issue.
Um, how would that, how would that happen if they haven't, as long as we're talking to it, then it's really interesting.
Correct, I I think Commissioner Boatright, the character right, but in certain question, they're not obligated to the spot, right? We are obligated to.
Got it, got it, yeah. Yeah, but I don't mean if there's anything that's been said so far, that that's why you're standing in the podium.
The first question he has is why we're doing, why we requested the townhomes versus the.
Well, the the question is the timing, I guess, right? Because um I I don't have all all the history, but I guess it was requested when when it was first designed for the commercial residential combo uh units on that property. It it came, it came up as along, we just make this residential, and then the the general consensus of the feedback was that, well, it's not, it's not attainable, we won't be able to make any money off that. And now, now you're presenting something that supposedly.
Can I think to that?
Yeah, that's that's the developer.
O- o- originally, when we started the project, we had seventy four units and we had twenty eight thousand square feet of commercial. The city is the one who said, too much traffic, we don't want the commercial. And the city brought us down to where we're at, where we were at the develop, at the point of the development agreement then, which was like forty five hundred square feet, I believe somewhere in there.
Well, I believe the plans that were approved, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it still had a commercial component to it
Yeah.
in one building, and there was one building that was running twenty seven hundred east and the rest of the residential was interior and kind of towards the the canal end of the development. So this is very much a different plan.
So as I said, when it was first discussed and we were first here, uh we had twenty seven thousand square feet of commercial. Then we went down to, for your request, we went down to forty five hundred square feet of commercial. So it's not like we went from twenty seven to zero, kinda went like from forty five hundred to residential.
Got it, okay. And then the other question, uh, well, I think we already, we've already touched on the question.
Well, I still have a concern because it does say in the development agreement that the um homeowners association, the number sixteen, um, the rental regulations, it says twenty five percent. But in your statements, you said you want fifty percent rentals allowed, and I am not okay with fifty percent rentals, sorry. Um, South Weaver has been very clear in terms of, you know, homeownership and and creating community and neighborhoods and things like that. And I'm not saying that people that rent homes can't be a part of that community, but I'm more likely to, you know, go with the twenty five percent as long as it's something that's very clearly spelled out. It's not short-term rentals, it's not Airbnbs, it's not VRBOs. We do live in a location that, you know, we're right by a lot of ski resorts that it might be appealing for somebody to say, hey, I'm gonna rent this out on a nightly basis. And we we have short-term rental codes, we have, you know, things like that that apply, so.
That's, that's, that's called out the short-term rentals.
Yep, so I I just fifty percent in this, no, I'm not okay with that. Twenty five, I'm more opposed to that. I don't know if it'd even be, you know, put down to twenty, but again, it's, that's once the full. I guess my thoughts on this is it's once the 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 entire development is completed, because if you're having to build this in five separate phases and you say I now get fifty percent rentals versus owners, I feel like we're we're not being conducive to what we're ultimately trying to gain here, which is opportunities for homeownership. You know, that's why we're doing the townhomes, that's why there are lot lines so that people can actually own these individually, um, it's not a rental project.
Well, a a reason for echoing the developer is just based on where we're at today in the economy. We wouldn't, this wouldn't need to be in there
Yeah.
three years ago because we wouldn't be concerned, but now we're seeing just something we should be prepared for. And and if a homeowner, PCS, is in the military, they get to change their job or something happens in their family and they can't do two flights of stairs and they wanna rent it until they can sell it, then it should be the owners. You know, right to do what they want to with a five hundred thousand or four hundred thousand dollar home, no different than, no different than any other neighborhood, so. Um, that's why we're, I mean, we 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 wanna sell them, we don't wanna keep them. But if we have to keep them, we might have to keep a phase, we might have to keep a building, we don't know, like there, we just will need to press on and build more, but that's our, I guess, our concern.
Commissioner, just to offer maybe a way that we express that. It's typical in the view of the arts or community life that's put in the rental restriction.
Yeah.
And then.
Not aware.
Hard out for that rental restriction, they'll allow for like military service.
Mm-hmm.
Temporary reassignment of jobs, missionary service. And there's a provision of cities that we can look through the borrowed asset, which we still have to the election, so that it hard out those things where we consider somebody to be a resident even though they're not present.
Because of those very specific circumstances, extenuating circumstances.
Yeah.
Not just having investors come in and hey, because there is a lot.
No, no, we're we're, that's not, like I said, we, our intent is just to sell, but if they're not selling and we can't sell them and we can rent them, then we can rent a five-unit complex as the owners and manage the complex or that that portion as the owners, and we'll, we would, we'd like the opportunity to do that. So if we're at twenty five percent and then all of a sudden, the next building comes up and we have to do the same thing, we don't wanna be, we don't wanna run a business, so we're gonna need to rent them, so thi- this is just to give us flexibility, we don't wanna keep them.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, is there any precedent with um just to see if there's a a middle ground that could make sense here, is there a precedent that says we'll allow you to have a higher percentage of rentals up to a certain date or up to a certain time to address their concern of, hey, we just need time to build this out, but after that time, then this rule no longer applies and they have to get rid of, they have to go back down to twenty five percent, is there any kind of precedent for something like that?
You could, well, let me answer the part. I think the best way to get at this kind of thing is to require that it be a covenant of the rest of the land that in agreement, we've got a shorter duration, so I would have them do it in CCNRs. But you certainly could write with DCNRs to allow a phased rental percentage, you know, whatever you agree to have it be. I will express my personal preference and advice, if I think if you hit higher rental thresholds, then the HOA becomes an HOA that's run by a property management company, not by the residents, but the neighbors. And you tend to get less quality and highly careful, less efficient. And I do think it's a better thing to have the rental just, you know, at home that's twenty five, twenty five years ago. Now, we're in, we're in market of commission debt now, so I can, I can appreciate completely where the capital comes from. That they have economic considerations to getting this done, and we also want to be in built right, to have the seeds and have the base. So you could do that, I would say do it through the DCNRs, you could require that if you, you could require in the development agreement that if you place in the DCNRs, the the city staff review those covenants when we do the modified approval.
I was gonna ask, is that something with the CCNRs that, because we haven't seen anything, but we can require as part of the development agreement to include CCNRs, how they're gonna handle these various items?
Right, so you can call it out at kind of a high level in the development agreement, do the file review and make sure that that's a sufficient. And if you wanna have conversations with the developer and try to figure out, you know, is there a middle ground that gives you some certainty that if you build something, you'll be able to figure it out and have it built over time? Obviously, an owner occupies the community primarily, so that you get the care and attention that comes from that, you could, you could do that.
And just to clarify too, the city's not responsible and the commission's not responsible or or even city council for that matter, to create CCNRs for development, that's on the developer to. Okay, we would just review and.
We would make, we, it'd be part of this, we would, every, every HOA agreement, development that we.
I think it's even worded in the development agreement that it will be in place by the CCR.
Yeah. Um, m- my question, since I have your brain here for a second, I think Joe would be fine with that twenty five percent at, with those stipulations that you put, like somebody goes TDY, some death in the family, uh, any kind of that verbiage, especially if it allows the developer to be able to rent. I don't know if twenty five percent would work, but that's what those exceptions are for, right? You know, if we're at twenty five percent rented, I'm just asking, and we build the next phase, right? Market goes to heck and I have to rent what would end up creating more than twenty five percent. What I'm getting at is, if we can put some language in there that the developer can exceed that twenty five percent for financial reasons.
I think that's a fair-minded suggestion. There, so the way communities like that was anyhow is that the developer controls the HOA until a certain ratio.
Seventy five percent, yeah.
What you maybe could do is have, you know, that that thing near that moves along once the developers move a certain percentage of the unit such that they lose control of the HOA and it goes to the community. And you could, you could at that moment only allow that ratio of units to be rented except for those the developer have.
So, and with that other language that you had suggested about certain exceptions, deaths, TDYs, orders. We would, we would.
Marcy's been ours will have that, have it. But, I mean, we care about people who are doing military services in our life. Missionaries are, and understand the job circumstances or such. The way you write those, they're, they're a good shot left, right? So they can rent, but can't be permanent, it's only while they're.
And I think with the phasing that's being presented, I mean, obviously each time you complete a phase, if it's twenty five percent of the completed building, you do get additional, you know, options for rentals and things like that, correct?
Well, the way, I mean, what, up until the point where we hit that seventy five percent and it goes to the owner?
Yeah. Or gets hired a property management company to come in and, you know, take care of the maintenance that gets away, yeah.
Uh, what I'm trying to protect, what Joey's trying to protect is his interest in, as a developer, if we get stuck behind the eight ball, interest rates climb through the roof and I can't get in, and I've got a construction loan, I'd like to be able to rent what I need to cover my construction.
So you can do it by percentage, you can do it by, you could give them a little note where they can rent, you know, say longer twenty four months after the. And then after that, I'm gonna do the first threshold, there's a few of them, like.
I, I. I I like that recommendation and just a- as I'm looking at this and, you know, I I think that we wanna make sure that you're successful, we don't wanna have some arrested development here. Um, you know, i- i- I think the 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 value and the wisdom in that is that twenty five percent of this entire um development is around seven units. Your phases are around seven units, well, three of your five um are are phases, are 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 seven units. Um, your phase one and two is four and nine, which is a little different, but um. That's why I asked if we could do it at the point of of either giving it to a management company or we lose that seventy five percent, we've already got seventy five percent, because it does change. I could have the first phase completed and let's say someone gets TDY orders, another person had a death in the family, for whatever those reasons are, two of those units are now rented, that that's gonna start killing me on my next one because I've already got two over here. It w- it would be nice if it was just that seven, I, you know, I had seven in that phase and I'm covering my construction one. But if I, I only got five because the other two have been utilized in the first phase, does that make any sense? So if if we can.
That would have been a carry for that, I think, what you have is the twenty-five percent is hard for them. But if you have any of those exceptions or circumstances, it won't count as.
As that twenty-five percent, okay.
And that's the way you write your C T N R's to come for it. And frankly, you're not gonna have more than one of these units for that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Happen as it, as, as, it's just interesting.
And Murphy's Law occurs, but if we can get some examples of that language.
You're not gonna have happy.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, Trevor, is, can you send us some of that language that we can put in the C C R that you are satisfied with?
So, so if you look at the city's internal, it's going to be well, uh, ordinance. Get points to the election code and then the election code has those stated carve-outs for when somebody is considered. A resident, even when they're not a resident.
So Jamie, for, for our purposes tonight, um, how we would address, address that. To, to make, uh, adjustments to kinda cover this particular scenario.
Assuming you're in favor of the development agreement, otherwise what you would do is. Uh, move to recommend a development agreement, that's the addition of language that would. Place a firm rental cap in the C T N R's with exceptions for. The kinds of residency exceptions that exist that stay on under the election code. And then they can book them in when they write the C T N R's, we'll review and make sure it's.
And what I'm doing currently is I'm writing, making notes on, on the current development agreement. In the next meeting, I can have the original development agreement that was used for the public hearing. And then a redlined version of your draft and public, of the development agreement. And then at that point, you can choose which items to, to remove from that draft and then either recommend. The original draft or recommend your own, your draft with the amendments, or your draft with the amended, amended amendment.
I think we're all taking notes here, so hopefully we'll be able to capture everything that's being discussed.
Yeah, but you'll want, what you want in the note is the higher level, that we'll get grants.
Um, well, I had a question about the garbage collection, so the garbage collection layout or the requirement here is. Is very high level and a little vague, i- is that, do we think that, does that. And I guess my question is, I didn't really see a really good option in there, so if you guys could, if you already had a plan on how you were gonna do that.
So if there'd be individual, uh, they, they gave us the option in here or we have the option for both, a central collection point, which. To the degree is a mess for everyone that lives there.
I don't like that, so I like hearing that it's individual.
Individual cans or.
There's enough space in between those two buildings on the top for a garbage truck to.
So we, we built, we required in the development agreement a thirty-two foot width between the buildings. And so, um, to accommodate for things like garbage collection. To allow for those trucks to go through and still pick up and dump and have some flexibility on.
And there will be no garbage collection on any of the units along twenty-seven hundred, correct? It will be interior collection.
Along the, to your road.
It'll be in front of homes or in the alleys. Oh, I hate to call them alleys, but.
No, alley, yeah, what, what, what do they call them, the.
Private driveway.
Right, okay.
It's private road or private right, private drive, yeah. Private road, sure, yeah.
Are, do any other points of discussion or, uh, commissioners?
Um, the only, I guess that we're still just going like through the development agreement. I, in landscaping, you're at the fifteen percent, which is what we require, it's kinda hard to say anything about that, cause we haven't seen the actual landscaping plan, um. My only concern over, I, vinyl's fine, I just know you guys are in a heavy wind area. And I worry about fencing blowing over and, and obviously the maintenance of that. And does it maybe make a little more sense to do a masonry, I don't know, um, you know? But I do like that it's not gonna be obviously a chain link or anything stuff. And just safety, I guess, with the Davis Canal, you know, that was the only other thing, is just making sure that we're not creating.
We're, we're, we'll leave their fence up.
Their fence will stay. And I know it says that it will, is rated to withstand the proper, so I guess I'm fine with that. Oh, parking, is the twenty-six guest parking stall sufficient for the number of units?
It is actually overparked, so, yes, so they would, with thirty-five units, they'd be required. One additional guest parking for every three units.
Okay.
And so they'd only be really required about twelve, if you round up, right? And so, um, they have, they've overparked and, and I think it's important to know on the phasing. If they phase the way they have that, right now, they still have enough guest parking for each phase. Um, so that's sufficient for that parking requirement too. So if you look at phase one and phase two, that, those five additional parking stalls would be sufficient for their guest parking for those units. And then phase three, those additional five would then feed in, and then phase four puts in a whole chunk. And then phase five will obviously use the rest of them.
That's why we put the phase in that order, so we can cover the parking and get.
But doesn't that road have to go in and all of the utilities and everything within phase one?
All, all the utilities, the connections, so they'll have to make sure they have the, the s- stormwater, the sewer, the. All the water will have to be in for each phase, but, so, so. It, in the, in the memo, it, Brandon mentioned that it's, it's a, it's a little strange, it's not how we would choose to do it.
Yep.
O- overall, we're not very concerned because it's, it's more just their ability to put in that infrastructure, they have to do that before they can report, record any. Plat that they bring forward and so, if, if that's how they wanna do that, we, we're fine with that, we don't see anything. Too terribly wrong with it, it just is running a, a lot, a lot of length of type prior to each phase.
Yeah, my, my comment in, in my memo was just simply to, to say, I, I don't see any reason why they couldn't phase it the way that they're. Showing. It just financially didn't seem like it would maybe make a sense, as much sense, but, you know, they, it's up to them as to how they think. It's showing this is, is going to be best, and they, they think that, that, that five flights there on train, that is, is the best one to view first. That's fine, you just have to have all the supporting infrastructure built. That's all I meant by that.
And that made me, also, the sewer capacity, I noticed that in the development agreement, it mentions that they're exceeding the capacity. But that the impact fees will be adjusted accordingly with the blah blah.
Not exceeding capacity, that, that. Um, that goes back to the original development agreement, back at the very beginning of this.
Okay.
Um, just to, to recognize that what was originally master planned or, or, um. The number of units that were anticipated on this were more, were just regular commercials, which would have been.
Cause that's what I was, I was questioning what you were saying, the assumed commercial only land use, but with it being now primarily residential.
Right, so it's, it's high, it's, it's higher, but there, there is not a capacity issue with the.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, that's just to acknowledge that.
We, we just have sufficient capacity for.
Yes, it's not, it's not a capacity issue, it's just how it was originally assumed, the number of units, right, just. Simply trying to acknowledge that it was different. That I don't really, even that provision is even that valid to be in the development agreement anymore, but. Um, just to, then not have it departed too much from the original, I think it was just.
And I had a quick question on the term of the agreement for the five years. Um, if the developer gets through, let's just say phase one and th- through three, and it takes them five years to get there. What, what is the, does this mean that this agreement is dissolved at that point and we have to go through this whole process? Again, to re-up the agreement if we want them to finish four, phases four and five, or how would that work?
Nineteen point three. Nineteen point three.
Why, why are you looking it up, like, what was your, I mean, ideally, in a perfect world, how quick are you building all five phases?
Um, I'd say, yeah.
So just be solely based on sales?
Yeah, I will put a. We start the architectural plan and I have some impact set up. I'll read on market and see what's the logic of it, like, if I start getting orders and people wanting them. And those are going off the shelf. I look Weaver, I'm sure to, to move into Weaver, um. So, I'm hoping that it's gonna be, that. If we get pre-sales, we might do another phase, you know, just, we'd like to get done in a year and a half.
Oh, okay.
You know, and sooner possible, but.
Okay.
Uh, we saw fifty-eight units in Sunday. When it was very, very smart. So we're hoping that, that comes back, so.
Okay, go ahead.
The, the five years is what it says, that after five years, the zoning approvals, whatever, with the commitments. Are made and the shelters are, are sold, I. So if you feel like that's too short, you should extend it. I, I think you want some horizon in there to, to, to get it to sell.
No, 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 yeah, I agree, I don't, I, I wasn't necessarily thinking it was too short, I was just wondering what the process was. And my assumption was, it, that we'd have to go through this whole process all over again.
Well, I think if you're worried that it's vague, you could certainly, that language should say exactly what I think. You could, for example, and this is not a recommendation, for example. You could say that the zoning changes that you make a difference would remain beyond five years, but whatever the city makes in the presentation. Over the phase that, that, so if you think like that, I would still say.
Got it, okay.
There, there are some things in the development agreement that are like, there are some things that would be more. You could certainly, but it's a few.
But I think more specificity is, I, I think prudent.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
And this might be a point of just information then, so if the rezon, rezon run with the land, so if it gets rezoned to R seven, that gets approved, recommended for approval. That stays, how does that apply for the development agreement? Because if the development agreement is specific to the parties, you know, and. We get to that five year, the rezon to R seven stays, but the development without those additions.
The really smart.
Could expire.
If the rezon, if it's rezoned to R seven and then. The development agreement lasts, it's, it's over, hold the property at that point, I would have the right to make an application under R seven. With, with those requirements, but you can make a rezon condition.
Okay.
So you could, that is a fifth.
I'm thinking on that.
And I guess I should clarify, it's like, other than you did make the rezon conditional on.
This specific development agreement.
One, one thing that we, um, as we discussed, the rezon and including. Including the requirement for a rezon in the development agreement was a potential of that. If, if the rezon, if the rezon had a reverter, it would revert back to commercial overlay at the current moment.
I wanna get rid of that.
So, right, and so that's why the, the committee had requested a rezon to R seven, so that that. That zoning status is currently on the post, but essentially down by.
Yeah, I guess the short answer, what Trevor just said, is. Is, the House recommendation that is the development agreement, if they don't put one under the development agreement, they would go back to R seven.
Right.
All right, any other questions on the development agreement?
No, I think I've got anything one-on-one to bring.
Commissioner, anything somewhere?
Um, I do wanna recognize that what is before us now. Um, where you have so much, um, landscape or green, green space, open space. I, I, I think that, you know, you should be commended for, for, for really playing ball. And, um, I, I, I think that, that what you have here is, is, is a very sustainable plan. The, the sizes of your buildings, um, the pathways, the walkways. Um, you know, the accessibility, uh, you know, for residents in that area. Um, the retained housing that, that you're proposing, the use of, of that, uh, topography. I, you know, I, I think that, that, um, I, I, you know, those who live behind this development, I think are going to. Uh, recognize the value of this, uh, buffer between, uh, their home and the freeway. Um, as, as this, this comes to fruition. I, I think that, you know, you've created sightlines, but also created a visual and a sound barrier, you know, which. A multifamily development like this, this is exactly where this should go. Um, you know, it, it does help, um, you know, create more of a buffer of. Single-family homes where single-family homes have less, uh, infrastructure that, that protects them from that sound. You know, as you have that infrastructure with the basement garages, you've got these homes that. Um, you know, are, are designed, you know, to, to facilitate that living. You know, closer to a, a, uh, a, a busier, you know, you know, highway freeway. And, and so, you know, I, I, I think that, uh, you know, what we have before us is, is, is a really. Uh, you know, well thought out plan, um, and, and so, you know, I, I really did wanna just recognize that.
Thank you.
Um.
We can try and work with, with the council, that staff, with the code, and doing the best we can.
There, there's, yeah, there's a lot of creativity that's been placed here and, and I, I just wanna say that, that's, that's recognized.
And, and I appreciate that recognition, and I, I, I'd like to just say. About the, the three buildings that we had before. We just didn't give up because finance is hard, we, we put our heads together, it came to, um, that. You know, it's gonna be something like this, which I think. Would be more conducive to the city and what they want, and it certainly would help us in continuing our project, not going up our hands like a lot of people do. And they just leave it just there. So, who knows when, you know, the market turns back around, they get somebody interested again, we didn't do that, we, we stuck it out.
Anything else, Commissioner with that?
Um. The, as I read through the development agreement, um, I just wanna make sure that there is language in here that if. If any of this development agreement isn't held up, which I believe it is, um, I believe there is a, a. A section in here that says that.
People?
Yeah, there, there's a, uh. Penalty or re, or punishment or repercussions that exists.
For what exactly?
If, i- if, if the development agreement is, is, is held in breach.
Is there a default number twenty-one?
Yeah, I believe it's, yeah, near the end there. Um.
Twenty-one.
I feel like that's fairly standard default language for.
Okay.
I mean, attorney fees, not as many. Amendment.
Any other concerns, Commissioner?
No.
Commissioner, go.
I, I guess I just, just clarification, just for my sake, since I'm coming into this at this point, but, so the, the thirty-five number was. Already approved by the city council.
It wasn't approved by the city council, but that was the, the negotiated number at that meeting, um. And so that was what the developer moved for with their proposal, and that number was in their court on, yes, okay, okay.
In other words, there's been no land use approval of that thirty-five. Figure, the council was innovative, but it's just come forward with other things being acceptable, but they thought that.
Well, and I think it's very important, it says up to thirty-five, but I think as a commission, we do have a say and a voice. Is thirty-five the final number, is there room, which I think it's appropriate to say, is there something more that can be done and addressed? You know, to again make this the best that it can possibly be for the future residents, cause that's truly what this is being planned for. Is the future residents and our neighbors that will be living here in South Weaver, let's make it great for them, let's not make it be something that the surrounding neighbors. Flip their middle finger at every time they drive by it, you know, or the people move in and they're like, why did they plan it this way, you know, this isn't. Functional, it's not usable, it's, you know. There's issues.
Yeah, and then my, my only concern is like, I mean, it sounds like we've addressed it, but just like the very clear language on the rental concept for sure. Um. Can I add more context on that rental, so, um, just to maybe, swash any fears about short-term rentals or I A D U rentals?
Swash?
Swash, good word. Swash, good word.
Is that how it's come out?
Uh huh.
Way, okay.
I, I think, did I say it right? I don't know, maybe, I make up pronunciation. I like it. Swash or a swazier, I'm sure it's either one, I don't know where you're at. Anyways, to, uh, calm any fears, um, our, our internal accessible dwelling units are not allowed on any parcel that is under six thousand square feet. And so you can't, you can't create that in any of these, because they're going to be, the footprint of that parcel will be the, the townhome itself, uh, as you see on the plot. Um, and then the short term rental code, they won't be allowed because they're within two thousand feet of a school. And so the, they wouldn't have any allowable for those short term rentals as well. So, um, just to kind of calm any fears on those. So we're really looking at just long term rentals in that, and long term is defined longer than thirty days, right, so.
And, and we may not have a say on that, but, I mean, let's see, is the developer looking to rent them to cover costs? I mean theoretically, you, you have the option to cover it, to offer rent at whatever rate you choose, because you're already covering the entire expense as opposed to a homeowner who now could likely have the mortgage where they have to be at a set amount. So, I mean, we talked, you talked about, like, well, you talked about who, what kind of renters we would have, and I, I agree with the comment that was made that, I mean, you could still end up with, I mean, you could do the same thing with people buying houses, right, and end up with that neighbor, so, um, I guess I'm, you're not gonna, like, it wouldn't be a situation where you are offering rent at whatever rate you can just get, you're, I, yeah. Yeah, it's the same as that. Okay, it would be appropriate to whatever the cost of the unit was.
I have a unit, just like the type B units in North Salt Lake, and I'm only renting for twenty four, but they're going for twenty six that we.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, you know, I don't think he meant anything like, well.
Right, and, and you didn't.
People, people that can afford that typically, typically.
And, and it would.
Can afford that kind of rent.
Sure, no, I, I did, I don't disagree with you on that.
I mean, we, we can't.
Yeah.
But that would be a last resort, resort, you know.
Sure.
Million dollar, four hundred thousand dollar mortgage, he's gonna rent it to cover that.
Okay.
Well, if I got five times that or four times that, I gotta, I gotta make it, you know, market rent anyway, because I'm just killing myself again.
Right. Yeah, that was, that was my questions.
Okay, the, um, I think the, I, I, I didn't have anything to add. I think you guys touched on everything that I was gonna do, to bring up actually. Um, you, well, there's one thing, you had mentioned the twenty two foot garage was only on the
Type A.
High bay.
Yes.
And I'm pretty sure the building agreement says that's supposed to be in all of it.
Yeah, well, that was a mistake that I actually thought this cover about.
And why?
It was only, so, council wanted to make sure, because there is no driveway.
Right.
That the garages were at least that size, so that if two cars could park in there. And so we changed actually the footprint on the ones in North Salt Lake is their twenty one feet. So, we actually changed the twenty two by twenty two. We, we even changed the interior floor plan to accommodate that, so two vehicles were comfortable. I mean, there, there's two vehicles parking in the ones in North Salt Lake, but another foot is helpful.
Is that for clarification, just on the, um, number fifteen, item number fifteen design standards in the development agreement? Where you're talking about the garage dimensions and the driveways?
Yes, that's where it should be Type A, I mean, the Type A unit should be the garage dimensions.
Okay. Is there a way to delineate on that development agreement that they're discussing Type A buildings, Type B buildings?
Yes.
Because I think for clarification.
Yes, we can't do that.
So I, I just recommended that, it, on that, that C fifteen C, it would say Type A garage dimensions possible. Or we can identify, like, none of the, like, in the development.
So what we'll do is, that's a devol, a developer's proposal to, to, uh, exclude the Type B, uh, unit. What we probably want to do instead of Type B, we just probably want to put the unit number or the lot number
Oh, yeah.
in there. And then, um, the city council can consider that if they want to, if they want to grant that request or not. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Were they seven or eight foot doors? What was the?
There, there'll, there'll be eight foot doors by eighteen on the.
Oh, okay.
On the.
So you're, yeah, twenty two, I think that's even most, like, standard half ton trucks too, right, if I'm not mistaken, okay. Right, you're not gonna put a.
In the back have the off the driveway, so if you have.
Right, so you're gonna put that. I guess I'm just looking like, are people going to be actually be able to use, that utilize their garage? Are these front units going to be parked in the overflow, because they don't fit in a garage, but it sounds like they should all fit most anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of the concerns that we wanted to address. And obviously, we can't control every, if somebody wants to bring a big lifted Jeep in there, then I can't help them, right? That, that they're prerogative as a homeowner to do that, so.
You just get to the point where, like, I've lived in, I mean, I've lived in townhomes waiting for houses and, you know, I, it's just a half ton truck, and either I'm hitting the wall, putting a hole, or I'm just not using it, and, and then you just have a bunch of cars parked all over the place, so.
Yeah, we should animal that.
So, there was a comment, um, in the public comment about the, the, uh, deer heel drive at the top, about turning that into a flat space and then doing the curve. Um, but is that tenable, or does that make that curve too steep? Would be my question.
I mean, wh- wh- when the, when the grading's done, and the engineer's working on it now, so when it's finished, we'll see what that looks like, but it does make the, the rest of the road.
More steep.
Super steep.
Right, okay, yeah, I was just curious if, uh, if that was even tenable, um, or not, because I can understand the concern there, for sure. Unless you cut into that a little bit more, and you increase your retaining loads on both sides with those.
Yeah, there's, there's, then, then our curb profile doesn't match, so then we have a wall.
Right, well, I guess that, then that, your line of sight goes later.
And sidewalk goes away.
Yeah.
I mean, can there be any signage? I mean, I get that that's not going to make a huge difference, but on the sidewalks, I don't know, even signage, just to, because I, I'm just, like, just a winner, when that wind blows and, and that just turns to solid ice. And especially if they're new residents that maybe not be from the area and not realize what they're gonna encounter. I don't know, just something to identify for everybody involved. Kids walking by or whatever, to just maybe some, anything visual to maybe just, if we can't put the flat space, just to help raise awareness that.
It, 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 there will be, I mean, to, to come up the road, there, there will be an arch that if, if you're sitting flat, you won't actually be, I, I don't think the standard would even allow that.
Brandon? Well, when there is a bit. Definitely needs to be some sort of, you know, flat area at the top. I guess we would have to see the building grade show, but we, we don't want to introduce something that, that has a danger certain turn, either for the vehicles eating up and out of there, or, or, you know, sight distance down the road, so those are all things that curve up there.
Yeah, I think we'll wait and see on that.
Is there any precedence in, in regards to, um, having, having some kind of corner mirror installed, if we feel like it's really likely that a kid walking down sidewalk could get hit unexpectedly because the, the rise is too steep somehow?
I don't, there's not any, I don't know, any precedent for that to be done before.
You want a mirror put on a building?
But, I mean, it could be done. I mean, if, if, if as it's built, you know, as it's designed, everything shows that it should work and everything's good, but as it's built, you kind of define that, you know, there's some things that just feel unsafe about it, then I think still bring that stuff up and say, what can we do about this? I'll, I'll, we, we'll do our very best to make sure that, that it's true, the design part, that we try to eliminate all safeguards.
Yeah.
Um, at least as far as it goes. And that.
Okay, I was just curious, because that was just something that came to mind for, anyway.
There was one other thing on there that Brandon, just while you're there, um, the road dedication that is indicated.
Yeah, that was the question that I.
Are we doing something with Deer Run Drive to where we're going to need to be widening that road or using?
And so, so my memo was actually written more directly towards the developer.
Okay.
But basically.
That was a question you had.
We have not talked about that since my memo, so. I don't think I want to respond to that, or.
I'm not really sure what you're.
So Deer Run, Deer.
At the intersection, there's, there's a section that shows road dedication.
Page thirty nine.
Inside or.
With a packet, I don't know what.
Because it is right there, continue till the number.
Right here.
Yep.
Upper right.
Yeah, that's right up there. This, please, can you, can you?
So, so, southeast corner.
It's right, right on.
Oh, that?
Yeah.
Oh, so.
You know what that's about?
That was just given back to the city. City had it, and we have it, and this is over, and it's now belongs to the city.
It's back in the city.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing, we're not changing anything. It's just property that the city has now.
It was wrongly included in the plat that was recorded.
Yeah.
So, so we, we went ahead and did a, um, quick claim deed back.
It originally belonged to the city, and then for some reason showed up on ours, and so I think we dedicated it to Cleveland.
We did a quick claim deed back to you all, put it back where it belongs.
And nobody ever knows.
Okay, well, we'll have to.
Land naturally in here.
But, you know, on the next.
Pocket Park.
Commissioner, is there any other items?
Um, no, I, I think, I think I'm good.
All right, so obviously we have a lot of, uh, Trevor, we have a lot of red lines to review on this one, so approval seems premature on the, on this.
Yeah, I would, I would not recommend a, a recommendation tonight.
Continue.
I would, yeah, we can just continue that.
Based on everything that we, we want to see, and then we can do the side by side, like you were saying.
Yeah, and then we can, yeah.
Okay, in this instance, we, uh, Jamie, just to be clear on your training earlier, you would recommend putting a continue till X date?
Right.
Okay.
I don't, I don't believe.
To the next meeting? Oh, okay, that makes sense.
And do we need to specifically call out the items in the development agreement, or is our discussion what's been recorded sufficient? I've been taking notes, but I don't want to have to read them off. Okay, perfect, and I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that on item number seven, I hope this is appropriate, that we continue it to I think the next.
Well, before you do that.
Oh.
There's other things you were asking us to consider, not just the development agreement, and if I'm misunderstood.
I, I think it, it's fine if you want to continue the whole thing. The preliminary, you could, you could make a decision on the preliminary plat if you, if you wish. Or, yeah, this is an preliminary plat, um, that, that's your call as the planning commission, you want to continue the whole thing to the next meeting, and I'm still comfortable approving the entire plan, this next, the preliminary plan the next meeting, or whatever. Yeah.
I think so too. And I think just for what, I'm just going to put this out there, what's confusing is the fact that in this, we are considering an R seven rezone, but it has us considering amendments to the R seven multifamily R five adoption with the strategic growth overlay. Like, I feel like there's a lot that was packed into this, that, again, adding in the development agreement and all that stuff, it's kind of hard to know exactly what direction to take. So, I'm, again, I'll just make a motion that we continue, um, agenda item number eight, um, as referenced in the, um, oh, seven, sorry.
We, we're only on seven.
Oh, yeah, not in there yet. Sorry, um, seven, um, just to the next planning commission meeting, because I think that should be sufficient time to.
I would.
Or do you want to just continue it? You said not set a date.
I would say not set a date, I would go off of Jamie's recommendation of.
Continue until we can get the items that were discussed, addressed efficiently, to come back to the planning commission. So, that's my motion.
Is that good, Michelle? Can I get a second?
I second that motion.
Listen, require a roll call, or no? No, all on paper?
I.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll get there by the end of the night.
Motion to, to, uh, continue until all items have been addressed.
It can be acceptable.
Okay, item number eight, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Oh, I was forgetting, that was my bad.
Item number eight, uh, public hearing in action on ordinance, um, two zero two three dash zero two, amendments to residential multifamily R seven to residential multifamily R five, adoption of strategic growth overlay zone and rezone partials, parcels thirteen zero one eight zero zero eight four and thirteen zero three four zero zero six eight from R seven to R five S G.
We take a moment, take a break, just for a second.
Yeah, um, or we've, we're gonna do a moment of, oh, what is it? Personal privilege?
Personal privilege.
Personal privilege for five minutes.
For five minutes?
Point of privilege.
Point of privilege.
Point of privilege, yeah.
Agreed. I don't think it's.
I thought, unless we were going to hear.
I was reading through it, I couldn't remember all the details and it seemed like it was pretty much right in line with what we had discussed so.
It is, I I will make one, there was one item that I forgot to mention. In in our review and code committee, we had noticed that. Well, this is something we had noticed prior, but we brought it up in code committee is that in our in our usage table, our land use matrix. When that was adopted, we did not include a the planned unit development into that, the P U D code. And so currently, any new P U D applications would be denied because they're currently not allowed in any zone. And so what we would recommend with this, since we are updating the land use matrix with this code. Is potentially a a a update to add it as a conditional use because the P U D is a conditional use. If you add as a conditional use to residential zones. Agriculture through. Our five S G, right, so. I don't feel like we need S G on that use table necessarily. Because it's it's an overlay zone, so it's really just dictating the design standards and the development standards and allowing for additional density. And so not really adding any other usage. We can create another usage if we feel like we need to, but I didn't feel like that was necessary at this at this juncture. But if that's something that you agree with to put as an amendment, then as staff, we would just recommend it to go forward.
Got it, yeah, I think that's a good idea, and then I wanted to address, is it Mr. Peterson? Grub, sorry. So to address Mr. Grub's topic, is that something that is accounted for anywhere in code? Or is that something that would go away once we make these changes? What's the?
The nursing or assisted living?
Right.
I know it used to be an R A.
I guess alphabetical one. Is permitted than it's a commercial. Permitted in commercial, so it's late, committed in commercial and a conditional use. And the R L M, R M, R P and the R five zone.
So it is currently on the land use matrix.
It is.
Either as a permitted or conditional, given that what that don't you just mentioned?
Correct.
Was that all residential?
No, agriculture or residential well. It's it's all of them except for agriculture and residential low is a conditional use and then a permitted use in the commercial zone.
Okay, so just state the condition. Which zone it is coming in.
R L M, R N, R P and R five. According to this updated chart currently are.
That's all the other questions I had, Commissioner will see when you.
Um, oh, I know Trevor and I talked about this a little bit, I just want to make sure that how the strategic growth overlay is applied. And the density bonus, how that gets applied is very clearly spelled out in our code. And I know it's something that right now isn't in the draft. Because again, if we're going to give a density bonus bump for exceptional landscaping or exceptional building design or more open space. Or some kind of enhancement improvement to the overall development. So that it can be applied across any development that comes in looking for that strategic growth overlay, I want it to be very clearly laid out in the code. Because then that removes any kind of personal. You know, opinions, you know, how one commissioner may feel about it, you know, ten years into the future when it's a completely different commission. I just think that very clearly needs to be spelled out in the overlay code. And I don't see that anywhere.
I thought we left that out on purpose.
Yeah.
When we were talking about it to give the commission more leeway there.
But do you see everything like, because somebody could just come in and say, hey, you did great landscaping, you get sixty percent. Is that, that's what I'm saying, like if you give us.
Take the majority to do it.
I don't know.
Yeah, I I totally get what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's completely our decision, but I think I think it's.
We want to keep them more open, and I guess that's just where we get into, and again, this is a discussion, right, you know?
Yeah.
We just get into, you know, that if the code doesn't say it, because again, our job is to, what is the code state? And either it's the code or it doesn't.
Well, in this particular case, we get a lot of leeway though.
There is.
Do we want it that way?
In that code, sorry to interrupt your conversation.
No discussion.
In that code, so the it's. Ten dash twenty eight dash three subsection A.
Sorry, say that again.
Ten dash twenty eight dash three subsection A, that's on page eighty eight of the packet.
Okay.
It says residential density within a planned development may exceed that permitted that permitted by the R five zone up to a maximum of sixty percent. At the discretion of the planning commission and subject to concurrence with the city council. And I think this next part is the most important, the planning commission must find however that any increase in density will be compensated by increased amenity. And improved design, which in its opinion are proportional to the density increase, which is authorized.
Okay, so I guess that does cover it without spelling out specific.
Right, so you, it's kind of like a tit for tat type of conversation, right? Okay, you're you're doing a stone veneer on this building when you could have just done.
Party board.
Yeah, hardy board or you're 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 adding pickleball courts, which is an amazing amenity for the community or, you know, things like that that you can cite in that. And and I think in the future, when you do make those decisions, it's important for you to say, because of these items, this is why we're giving that. And and I feel like sometimes we want to be really specific in the code and sometimes we want it to be overarching so that we have that. That flexibility of negotiation and conversation. It it's one of the things that allows that kind of a powers conversation of the planning commission that you can have that negotiation conversation in the landscaping and the.
Right, that's. One area, sorry, just real quick, Commissioner like that. The overly, I think, is one of the very few areas where we have a lot of stay. So I'd like the way it's worded because of what Trevor was saying, that it gives us a lot of ability to really push and negotiate and try to get something that's really good.
And again, I do like that it is being established as only allowed in an R five, our highest density zone. Because I don't want it to be something, it's my opinion. Say somebody comes in with a patio home development, but I want to apply that strategic growth overlay and then thereby make it a higher density than that patio zone would allow. So I I support that it's just in the R five.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
I I mean, I've I've seen, I've seen a lot of different bonus structures with different cities. Some that were as as specific like done in Springville, you know, they you'd mentioned a few of them, like they have a a table of. Options, like a menu of options that you could choose from. And you, you know, each one has a certain value given to it on how much bonus density it gives. You know, Ogden is a little bit, a little bit more ambiguous, but still has some very specific things that you can do. And. You know, I I think when you do that, you're you're you're, you know. And you say, okay, here here's the menu, well, you know, if you've got, you know, a tight wad, looking at the menu, they're going to be like, all right, I'm going to have the. The the slider appetizer and the salad, you know, I'm not going to go for the for for the. Prime red, it's going to cost me a lot of money. And so I I do, I I'm saying that as as a as a an argument to say that, giving us that flexibility of saying, hey. All right, we know what is of good value here, show us what you are going to present. You know, and it I think I think that having that flexibility is is valuable.
To to go off of the the other zones, that's where that P U D ordinance would come into place, right? You can up to, I believe, twenty percent additional density based on standards within the P U D. And so that's where those other zones could get that, but that's also us gaining open space and and landscaping and things like that, so. That's just something to as a she was. Full understanding of those, so.
Okay, thanks for. Uh, Commissioner, school.
Does it have to be? If it's, if it, if you do get the increase, is it on every acre of the? Project or community? Or is it just an average? And there's and there's no way to divide that? Like say in certain areas, you can get the additional sixty percent.
If you divide it, if if the lot gets divided and then they only want to apply that overly to a certain section of their lot, right?
Yes, so it would, you would do the entire area that has the overlay zone on top of it, right? So if there is, and we don't love to do split zoning anymore, but if there is a situation, there are instances out there and.
Even allow for split zoning?
We do, yeah, it's not ideal, it makes it very difficult for us to do.
Oh wait, that's true.
Yeah, Peterson Farms is an example, Gateway is another example of split zoning. And so, but I would recommend not ever doing them ever again. But yes, if it if part of that has the S G overlay, then you wouldn't be able to get the additional density on that. That's where a P U D allows you to consolidate.
Okay.
But in that overlay, you're only granting it within that overlay zone. So let's have an example where we, you apply this along a corridor, right? And allow more density along a corridor, but then. You don't want it past a hundred feet of that corridor and you want it to to step down onto a bus stand, then you would just apply that differentiation. Again, I would make sure that that follows property lines, it makes it much simpler for us, but.
And I like the idea of the menu only because like, let's say, I mean, at some point, if you had. Four people at five, however many people up here that just really like trampolines or something, you know, and that's good enough to. If you put a community trampoline and you get your extra sixty percent, like, you know what I mean? I'm just saying it could, that was probably a really extreme example, but. Right, but I'm just saying like the football court, like I understand, like that's that's something big, but like, just like some weird thing that everybody disagrees that they like and. And all of a sudden, everything just has sixty percent more density over something that. Is not really improving.
Yeah, I think the. Uh, well, a couple of things, I think the what we're doing here is that it's it's such a a small percentage of the overall area of South Lieber. I mean, right now, it's it's two, two plaques, right?
Yeah, 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 I think it's that worth that worth, it is worth.
So.
Moving, this is a very small.
Because they have, I think, the two areas that are zoned R seven that have approved developments on them, they still get to keep their seven.
They get to keep their entitled.
The entitled vested use, right?
So not entitled, that's a whole different.
Only if they don't develop that and we, if the rezone to the R seven, you know, strategic growth overlay. You know, gets recommended for approval, city council adopts it, it becomes code, it then that's what carries because we no longer basically have an R seven zone.
Any new application for that land would then be subject to what the zone is currently in that point.
Yeah, fifty to a hundred years from now, they decide to abolish it and rebuild it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How does that work with development agreements, given that tonight we had the discussion with a developer who's wanting R seven? We're obviously going to be making potentially a recommendation on this, one way or the other. How does that, because he's committed for the development agreement?
It is a less legislatively, zoning is a completely legislative item. The only time you could ever be challenged on not granting a zoning is if you do it for any illegal reasons like discrimination, right? But no, no redlining district or things like that, right? But but you can say, I don't want this zone here, but I want this zone here, so I'm willing to grant this zone instead of this. So what, in this case, because it's a weird situation, I understand how weird it is. So and we'll continue to talk through it as as much as possible, but the R seven zone is what they had a vested right to apply for. And so we had to grant that because they couldn't apply for the R five S G overlay zone at that.
Because technically it doesn't exist right now.
Doesn't exist right now, right. They could have waited until that was passed and then made the application for that zone, but because it's not available. So what I would recommend in that case is is you on the rezone request for that that property. You would recommend a rezone. Be accepted. But pending the the decision of the R five S G overlay zone. And if that zone was available, then you would recommend. R five, R five S G, that type of thing, you can make that recommendation because it is not binding for the city council. The city council could decide at that point to give them R seven and it would be illegal nonconforming use. Because the zone is not on the books, but they were vested in that, right? Right, so it's similar to how the C O zone is acting for them right now. But that's what that would be my recommendation is that they can legislatively make that decision to use the new zoning that's available and not the the other zone.
Does it set any kind of a timeframe since they did come forward with a rezone request at the R seven level? That they're protected for a certain amount of time?
vested for two, two years.
Two years.
From the application date.
And as long as they start the process, then that continues.
Okay.
Any other concerns about the R five S G overlay and its accompanying items? No?
And I forgot that in the draft, it has the standards and requirements for establishing how the provisions of the article were confirmed, so. My initial point is pretty much addressed in terms of the things that we can look at, that keeps it very.
Right, there's. There's the landscaping requirement, there's the open space, so. One thing that I really kind of like on the o- open space requirement in this code, if you notice. Is that open space not less than ten percent of the gross area of the planned development shall be retained. Permanent open space, parks and playgrounds for the use of occupants of the planned development. Land proposed to be devoted for vehicular streets or roads, parking driveways, required setbacks and slopes greater than twenty five percent shall not be included in computations of open space. So some of those concerns that we've had about using hillsides as open space or using.
Retention ponds.
Retention ponds.
Is that included in here? Because that's obviously something like if you've got a non buildable area, it shouldn't be allowed to be considered part of your density. Because you're not building on it, is that appropriate?
The density, the only thing we have in our code for density is the hill or first base easement. We've allowed any other easement to count towards density.
Okay.
Uh, it's a pretty standard practice across the board. Uh, we can change that if we want to.
And I know there's been discussion, not just in this commission, but in previous commissions about should non buildable area. Regardless of whether it's an easement or it's just not conducive or, you know, in the case of the the lots that where it's completely separated from the main building area. Should that be allowed to be considered for a density calculation?
What's the reasoning on that?
To not include it?
Yeah, because like if I have non buildable space outside my window, that I enjoy is a nice field. I enjoy it just as well as if it was buildable and created as open space.
Well, I think where it comes into play, and it's specific again back to the loft tonight, is that they've got what point, it's an acre, isn't it? Like just under an acre, point nine something that's in that retention area that gives them that total of three point one seven five. But when you look at their development and their proposed building site, it's only two point nine acres or two point nine one acres like that. So do you do your density calculation based on the total square footage that they own? Even though knowing you're only able to be building and putting your development into a specific area, because it doesn't just.
Still open space, though.
Well, yeah, it's open space over there, but.
It doesn't go away.
We're talking density, though, that's what I'm saying, like, do we allow, because and again, in the, you know, that situation, they would get two additional units. Because they've got more acreage for consideration versus if they're just using their buildable area for their project. It it would have an impact, so I'm just wondering if that's something that we need to.
I think those are two. Good, yeah, I think those are good.
I I understand the concern, right, because it feels like they're getting some kind of bonus for something that they don't deserve, because they could use the ground for. Useful ground or whatever. I will just offer that, I think it's extremely difficult to go through and actually determine what's considered buildable ground. You, I think, to start to have to make a pretty long list of detailed things that you're going to consider as not buildable. And. It, I just think you make it, it makes the the calculation extremely challenging. That's just my opinion, ra- rather than just saying, well, here's your overall property. You know, here's the density calculation, that's it, it's super simple. And I think it starts to become pretty subjective. Would you, like, you know, our our. Utility easements that are there, they're not really usable, they're whole lines, are those excluded? It just starts to. Get pretty challenging, so. From my perspective and and from a staff level, we're trying to figure that out, Gary, Diego.
I do feel like the the lot requirements that are in code help protect against. Over densification, for lack of better word, because it, for instance. The city council saw a proposal from Nielsen Homes for sixty one units on their their acreage. Those units were eight thousand square foot lots on average, sixty six foot frontage on average. And so that, but they calculate density excluding the the overlay zone. And excluding any property that give us for just for the public works property, maintaining all the other open space. And that put their density at two point eight five units an acre.
Yep.
Right, and so that matches our R M zone, however, because if we were to do straight R M zone. That that lot requirement is now ten thousand square feet. It's a lot, a lot frontage of average of ninety feet, right? So there's there, they build that in in into it and so it's pretty good at catching some of those. Those worries there, and we we discussed it and and we can continue to discuss it in in future meetings or in this meeting if you would like. But we felt that those provisions help prevent that, and it's also when you start adding in our public utility easements, our roads. That are going to dedicate to the city. It's a moving target for them, and so it makes it really difficult to calculate an accurate density.
And I do, and honestly, I'll acknowledge, we're talking maybe one, two units in terms of a density bump, so it's not like double digit. Exactly, so and and you you make a very valid point, both you and Brandon, about the easements and all of that, so I I'm I'm fine, I'm satisfied.
It it's a good thought, though, I I would say, like, we had, we've had lots of internal conversations about it. When the the Hillary first.
So I'm not up in the night by bringing it up.
No, like.
I'm not getting a little crazy because it's approaching ten o'clock.
Yeah, when when the code was changed to add in the Hillary first base. It was discussed if if you wanted to, there was, it was a good idea to go farther than that and add in other things. And in the end, it came back to, let's just leave it at the Hillary first base. Easily defined, the the development rights were already purchased when when those easements were put in place. So that was the thinking behind doing that, previous to that, it was just gross acreage period. It hasn't been discussed at length.
Growth and net actually is making a lot more sense to me right now, so we're good. It was good that you said that gross footage versus net, like, yeah.
Net is crazy.
We're good, there's no way.
Okay, any other concerns on this one? I I wanted to give staff some kudos for putting that together as a lot. And from my perspective, I thought you guys did a great job, so I think you captured everything that we had discussed because we've done the rounds, I think, two, maybe three times now, so.
Few times been around that track.
Yeah, so I thought you captured it really well, and. So I'm I'm gonna say I'm perfectly fine with how he, how this is laid out for the R five. And strategic growth overlay zone, I don't feel like we need to make any additional amendments outside of what's already been. Brought up, I can't remember what we call that, the land use matrix table. Add the P D U's as. As a.
P U D.
P U D as a conditional use. So outside of that, I think it it's fine, so if someone wants to attempt the motion, we can. Keep going. Any takers?
I'm thinking about it.
This whole.
So so let me preface, just when you make your motion, because it is a lot. You're you're recommending. On the ordinance, you're recommending approval or or whatever it is to the city council for the. The R seven. The, hold on, let me read the ordinance. I would, I recommend jumping into the ordinance title because that's going to have the best.
Yep.
That description of what exactly you're looking at.
I want to give this a try.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Like to make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero two colon. Amendments to residential multifamily R seven to residential multifamily R five. Adoption of strategic growth overlay zone S G and rezone parcels thirteen dash zero one eight. Dash zero zero eight four and thirteen dash zero three four dash zero zero six eight from R seven to R five dash S G.
And then I would like to add an. Oh my gosh, and then.
Friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment. Amendment. Uh, to update the land use matrix usage table to add P U D's as a conditional use in agricultural zones through the R five zone.
Say that again? And land use ma- matrix to include.
P U D's as a conditional use in.
All residential.
All residential zones, right?
Well, including agriculture, right?
Including agriculture, yeah.
I agree with that.
Can I get a second?
I'll take him.
All in favor?
Hi.
Yes, yes.
I'm not saying yes.
And motion carries.
I'm saying I.
You too.
All right, great discussion. Item number ten, planning commission comments, real quick, Commissioner School, any additional comments you'd like to make?
I do not have any.
Commissioner McFadden?
No.
Commissioner will see.
I have one, and it's only, I just want to know if this House bill is on the radar of staff and everyone. And it's the House Bill two sixty five, the Sentinel Landscaping Amendment. Which is talking about the definition of compatible use. Within certain distance of military land and making sure that it's compatible with military uses.
What number is that bill?
So it's House Bill two sixty five. And it's the second commission, I'm just wondering if that's on radar.
It is, I read through it, we are currently in a compatible use plan with Hillary for space. And so.
So we're good at that point because we have that established.
That's just any other, you know, tally that haven't done on a smaller basis there.
Perfect, that's all I had.
I only have. Kudos to staff again, like, thank you for all the hard work, I think you guys did a great job here for everyone who came. And and stayed with us for four hours, thank you for your time.
Troopers get a snack on your way out.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, there's.
It was great to to have the discussion, I thought we had some great discussion tonight, and I thought we we took some great action, so I'd just like to thank everyone for that.
Commissioner Davis, if you're done, can I?
Yes, great.
One thing with the code committee is that they would like to know, it doesn't have to be an official motion or anything like that, but they would like to know which two. From the planning commission you would like to represent on the code committee for this year. And they they think it'd be best to rotate that on the February basis, we can rotate that with. A suggestion was the chairing, a vice chair, but that's up to you to determine who you want to have as a representative on that code committee.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, because I was, I I was on the impression that the mayor had to appoint everyone on the committee, no?
No, it's not an official appointment, it's a selection, and that's the direction the mayor gave me is that to have two of you just determine who are. You determine which two of you are going to represent the.
Do they need to have how many, how many representatives from two?
Just so we don't form a quorum.
Come on, let's bring three.
I am perfectly okay being on the code committee as if that's required for chair. My only concern there is typically what I've heard is that they start their meetings early, like. Uh, my only concern there is typically what I've heard is that they start their meetings early, like at four o'clock. And that's very difficult for me to attend, but if I can get it on my schedule early enough, I could probably make that work.
It starts at four thirty. Four thirty is the time, four thirty to five thirty be on on the city council night. Um, it's not on every week, which was on every week, so.
I'm I'm happy to to do that from my perspective.
I think it's fine. I think it's fine for a chair and a vice chair, you know, and obviously if you guys aren't in those positions still differently. But it. We're doing, especially if we're going to be the one. We don't want to come to any extra meetings.
We can talk about it again next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. It it'll give you cause to, oh, do I really want to be a chair? Do I want to be a vice chair? So I I think that's appropriate.
Do we need to make that as part of our official um bylaws or anything like that?
No, I don't think we need to. It's it's essentially an ad hoc committee, it's not formed by any ordinance or anything like that. And so um, I don't feel like it needs any official motion or official direction. It's just as the mayor suits fit to form the committee.
When in the meetings again?
Uh, Tuesday nights and city council nights.
And that would start effective two weeks from now?
On the twenty eighth, yeah.
Okay.
And it's twice a month?
Yes, typically. Sometimes once a month, sometimes we skip that. Just depends on what we're working on.
Then then we're in agreement, uh, Christian will see and I will start. And we'll we'll free Commissioner Boatright of that responsibility.
He will be so grateful.
All right, I'll look for a commission to adjourn or a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion for the adjournment of this meeting.
All in favor?